Forstuck issued Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone here for weekly briefing? Yes, sir. Mr. Cole. Dr. Cole.
Good evening. I just want to briefly report on the last Thursday annual meeting of the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op, which I attended. There was a long agenda in open session, and all the documents pertaining to those items are on the website. Just briefly, the items that are important are that there was a draft of the fiscal year 2014 annual report. That's primarily an activities report. There was also a preliminary annual financial report from the treasurer. There were some questions. There were some errors. There was some editing need to be done to both. I would give it a couple of days, and then the corrected version should be online. There were also a couple of votes taken. One of them was to update the administrative services agreement between CEVEC and the county. It was felt that this was necessary to do this because the finance director of the county, Mark Zielinski, suffered a serious health problem and is not on the scene. So there were no changes. It was just a reaffirmation with a new name in the document. And there was also a vote to approve a letter from CEVEC to the BCK law firm updating a request that it continue to represent CEVEC and jointly the compact when there are matters that pertain to both of them. One other item in the closed session dealt with CEVEC's pursuing additional renewable energy to sell to members that don't have projects of their own, such as our solar landfill project, and that, and non-members. You'll recall that CEVEC approved selling of the surplus power that's going to be produced by the several projects in round one and round two that amount to almost 28 megawatts of power being generated. The surplus, not, that is a power that's, as in our case, our municipal load is a little bit less than the power that will be generated at the landfill. So there were surpluses like that from various projects, but not enough to meet the demand from off-takers who wanted to buy additional power. That included Monomoy Regional High School. They're going to get some, but not all they asked for. So CEVEC is looking for additional sources so they can satisfy that demand. Other than, I can't say anything more about it because it's still in negotiation. It is, the entity that we're dealing with is not a solar power project, however. Okay? And if there's nobody else for weekly briefing, I'd just like to make a public comment and remind people that on Sunday, October 5th, will be the, about the sixth annual Cranberry Harvest Half Marathon and 7.3 mile race. It will follow the same route that it has in the past. It will start from the high school driveway and end there. The 7.3 mile race will start at 11:30. It will follow the same course until it gets to Depot Street where it intersects the bike trail, and it'll come back to Oak Street from there. And the half marathon will start at 12 o'clock. Registration, packet pickup, the exposition will be held in the cafeteria of the new high school. And somewhere on the grounds that we can find grass, there will be the post-race party after the, after the race, if there is any grass. Okay?
Thank you, Larry. The race has been successful in the past. Are you going to run again?
Run?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Unfortunately, it's the same date as a New England Runner Pub Series race, the purpose of which is to run for beer, but I'm going to run here.
That's great dedication. Anyone else for public comment? Mr. Dougherty?
I want to, as you, as you know, I'm your representative to the Cape Cod RTA, and we've had a successful season as far as the Cape Flyer, and the intention is that it will be run again. However, I did notice during our last meeting, which was last week, that the, while the ridership on our bus lines are up, the ridership on the Flex Route, you know, is down. So I need to remind people that that service continues as long as it's supported. And although there's only a small falloff in ridership, it's important that we, you know, that we remember that that service is intended to be used, and folks should consider that as far as using that to get from Harwich down to, down to Provincetown as we get into the shoulder season.
Bill, do I take that, is Flex, is that, the Flex Route, is that year-round there or is that seasonal?
The Flex Route is indeed year-round. And of course, we'd see a natural falloff as we go into the, into the fall. But at the same time, it is an opportunity to take advantage of those things that are open between now and Columbus Day, and even after that. This, in order to be a year-round service, and of course, most of the services that are provided in areas like ours, a rural area, are subsidized. But even with the subsidizing, it is important that people remember that it's still there, available, and it should be used. At the same time, I might mention that the Cape Flyer has been a service that has paid its own way, and we're really delighted about that. Of course, it, you know, it has a very narrow application, you know, it's on weekends during our, you know, during our summer season, and they did cut it back where last year it ran till Columbus Day. They did cut it back because they'd see, they saw a significant drop-off after Labor Day, and that, you know, that continues.
Good. Thank you, Bill. Any other public comments? Lou?
Mr. Chairman Lou Urbano, Harwich. I was hoping that the members of the board had seen the article in the Cape Cod today on how our children are doing in the eighth-grade schools. Has anybody seen that?
I have.
It's pretty depressing. I was hoping, and something comes to mind, at one of our meetings, we heard a, I believe it was a student who had graduated from the Monomoy school saying, "Don't stop the momentum. I think we need to stop the momentum of sliding scores." We're not talking about AP scores. We're talking a basic level of reading and writing which our schools, excuse me, our students are failing. And I'm hoping that we might ask some additional questions to the school board, to the school, to the school superintendent, in terms of what's the plan for increasing the scores, because that's the only way we have of seeing how students are doing, in reading and math, basic reading and math. I hope that the plan is not to attract students from other areas which are doing really well so that the scores go up. I'm hoping it's to raise the level of all students. So if it's not on the agenda for next meeting, to have them here in the following meetings, I ask that it be put on the agenda. I ask that, Chris, if the board so desires, would send a letter asking what is the plan to increase how our students are doing? The article stated that there was an attempt to, that two principals were released in an attempt to help. Well, that's accountability. At least that's some accountability. But who's holding the school where 50% of our tax dollars, basically, are going? Who's holding them accountable if not us? So I thank you for your time.
Notice I got right off.
Very good. We do have meetings scheduled with the school committee. They'll be primarily focused on budget issues. I do appreciate you, this gives an opportunity, is another public forum, and that's good. But I do think you need to take those concerns to the school board. That can directly influence the curriculum and their objectives.
Larry, I will take them to the school board, but I guess I'm asking for something else, too. An individual citizen is an individual citizen that really doesn't have any authority other than to ask. But we have a board, a selectman's board, which are elected officials by our town, and I've got to ask you, what is the board? What is your position on it? Because if that's not clear in the papers, if that's not clear to the school board, then one citizen asking questions doesn't do much good. I really asking for the support of those elected officials to-
Make a stand.
In that regard, it may be worthwhile, before we go to the school board, is to, we can discuss among ourselves and see if we want to make a statement or not.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? If not, we'll move to the consent agenda. Ed?
Move approval of the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes of September 8th, 2014 regular session, and a vote to confirm the town administrator's appointment of Gregory Mello as distribution laborer for the water department.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Full carries? Move to public hearings and presentations. Our first presentation is from, we've been asked by the town of Chatham to forward a letter of support in regarding their, I'm going to say, argument or their discussion, I guess, with the fishery, national, the fisheries and wildlife on who controls Monomoy. I think normally, this letter is fairly generic, and we would support it because we're asked, we're asked to, we normally support our neighboring towns. This one's interesting, however, because most of us don't quite understand all the issues and have some questions beyond maybe just the nature of this letter. So we've invited Mr. Ted Kuhn, the director of Coastal-
Resources.
Resources. I was going to say Studies. Coastal Resources in Chatham, to give us a brief overview of what the issues are, and so we better understand what's going on. Ted?
Thank you, and I really appreciate the opportunity. As Larry indicated, that the town had, through our chair of selectmen, last week, I believe, or the week prior, a couple of weeks ago, had been to a meeting and asked for other towns to kind of listen to our issue and concerns, and ideally, if they felt so inclined, to support our position via a letter that we had prepared. Many of you may have been reading, you know, the nature of this topic recently, but it's not a new issue for the town of Chatham. We have been involved very closely with the seashore, or seashore, with the Fish and Wildlife Service relative to Monomoy National Wildlife Refuge since the early 2000s. That's when they approached the town and let us know that as a requirement, they have to do, as all national refuges throughout the nation have to do, develop what's referred to as a comprehensive conservation plan. And it's basically, you can appreciate this, they are supposed to look at the activities that occur within their refuge under their jurisdiction, assess whether those activities are appropriate, identify different management styles and plans that they plan to do as far as overseeing the refuge. Seems relatively straightforward. At that time, they came to us and said that they had a potential significant issue relative to the allowance of our commercial shell fishermen to work the intertidal flats. That, at the time, was a very significant issue because the flats were truly the holy grail of the Cape soft-shell clam industry, and we had a lot of guys working those flats. So we have been very actively working with Fish and Wildlife since the early 2000s, really focused on that primary issue. We knew that they were engaged in this large plan, and that there would be many other topics that would be coming out, but that really was where the focus was. Fast forward to approximately 2010, after a lot of very good cooperative work and dialogue with Fish and Wildlife, it looked like we were coming up with a very mutually agreeable plan relative to that intertidal zone clamming. That would presumably, we hadn't seen their final recommendations, but would presumably allow that activity to continue. Well, the last few years, they've been kind of working on their plan, the final aspects of it, and it was really admittedly at the 11th hour where they came forward and acknowledged that there were probably going to be a couple other recommendations that we were not anticipating that were going to be very controversial. One of which, as you may recall, if you know the history of Chatham shorelines, which is moving all the time, the southern limit of what we refer to as South Beach along, along the outer beach, had joined with Monomoy so that we're, in essence, you can walk from the lighthouse down the beach and right on to Monomoy. Incidentally, there has been now an inlet that has formed, but actually, when they came up with their plan, that inlet had not occurred yet. Well, on their own, even though the town, Fish and Wildlife, and actually the National Park Service, who has jurisdiction over the outer beaches as part of the seashore, we had come to an understanding that even though the two land masses join down at Monomoy, we would control one side, you would control the other, and with some mutually agreeable discussions in time, we would figure out how to separate that management, or redefine that management, and where the boundaries actually were. Well, the Fish and Wildlife Service somewhat on their own, not somewhat, did on their own decide that their jurisdiction, which is defined as the mean-low water line on the east side of Monomoy, would now extend all the way up South Beach. They sort of went halfway up, came across and came back down, and they had categorically essentially said, "We are now in control of South Beach, the lower half." As I say, ironically, or coincidentally, where the line they drew actually became an inlet, you know, which was not part of their plan, it just happened that way. So that was the first new issue that came up that we were not anticipating. The second one is, in some ways, even more troubling. Forever and a day, when Monomoy was originally developed and taken as a national wildlife refuge, there has been a boundary on the west side of Monomoy. It's out in the open water. That limit has always defined by both Fish and Wildlife's management, as well as the town of Chatham and the state, they've always used that limit, that boundary, as the envelope within which Monomoy can move around. So that as long as Monomoy above low water stays within that limit, everything above low water will be part of the refuge. They have never exerted jurisdiction over the open water, and therefore all the fishing and other activities that would occur in there. Well, that is now changed. They are claiming that they have the right and authority to manage any and all activities that occur beyond the low water line and out into this water surface, out to that exterior boundary that was originally defined and very clearly in the takings document as simply the limit within which mean-low water can move around. So they have completely changed that perspective and are going to now oversee basically all activities that occur within that area. That isn't to say that you wouldn't presumably be able to drive your boat through there, but if your boat's going to stop and you want to get out and shellfish on the bottom, or drag a scallop tote dredge through this area, other fishing activities will now be prohibited. They are claiming that any, not claiming, they are stating that all, what they're referring to is bottom disturbing fisheries activities, scalloping, hydraulic, cohogging, muscling, and others, will, fishweirs, which is probably the most benign fishing activity there is, fishweirs will be prohibited in this zone. So we are now, you know, very concerned that they will be taking steps to very, very significantly limit the activities, you know, of all users of this water surface. So the town has engaged a significant effort to get some solid science behind this, to, you know, kind of counteract the claims of what the impacts they claim are happening. We are writing comments. The comment period, we were able to extend it. It was originally fairly short for the level of issues, very short period. We had it extended for approximately three or four months, longer than it had originally been planned, and it now runs out on October 10th in a few weeks. So we are, again, actively engaged in developing a fairly comprehensive package of comments to address those two principal issues, as well as, you know, a number of other ones. But it's really those issues that we feel are most impactful to both Chatham citizens as well as the Cape. So we provided a letter to this board and to other boards, basically highlighting those two primary issues, and have asked this board, again, to sign on to that and support our efforts to work with Fish and Wildlife, try to develop some more mutually agreeable approaches. If they have issues, we're happy to sit down and, you know, try to resolve those issues, change management plans if appropriate. But frankly, we don't even feel they have the jurisdiction principally over the open water, as well as the land mass on the south, or the east side, where they should even be, you know, requiring these actions. So I'm very much happy. I've been dealing with this since the get-go. I've been literally working on this issue for close to 14 years, so I'm relatively familiar with it.
Ted, let me ask you, what is, what's the issue? What's the problem they're trying to solve? Is, is our population is decreasing, and they feel that they have to, they have to step in to fix it, or?
That's a, that's a very interesting question, because from our perspective, if they implemented all these approaches, they probably, and I'm sitting here as though I really know this answer, but I sincerely feel, sincerely feel that they wouldn't see one change to the bird populations that occur with on Monomoy. I mean, they are doing well within reason, not because Monomoy isn't doing well, but, you know, they're facing the impacts that all migratory birds have going up and down the coast, and the issues they have to deal with. But as far as the refuge, the refuge is doing pretty well. And I think they simply have looked at what they feel is their area to manage. They've been advised by their own council that maybe they've been doing it wrong for all these years, so now we should do it the way we think we should be doing it, and now oversee all these activities. I just don't think that if they implement this, they would see any change in the viability of the birds and the shorebirds that they're supposed to be managing.
Okay. Thank you, Ted. Are there questions for Ted regarding this presentation or the letter?
Just a question for you, Mr. Chair. Do we have a representative here from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services?
Probably not.
So we won't hear, because I have questions for them, which is, why now? What problem are you trying to solve? So we won't get those answers.
No.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah. Yeah, Ted?
I can't speak for them.
Please don't, yes.
Why now is because they, they need to develop this plan. So we have literally for better part of, Keith Lincoln, who is here and who runs a boat from this area, was kind of joking, he's been hearing since the 90s that they were going to develop a plan, and it kept getting postponed and postponed. But they are doing it now because they need to do it now. They are up against the wall to get this plan done and move forward. So as part of that requirement, and having been presumably, we've not seen the full brief, if you will, the legal brief, they were told that this area, what I referred to as both the open water and the land mass on the east side, should be part of their management. That's why they're doing it. We feel that, well, you've heard.
I understand what you feel, but I'm disappointed we don't have someone here to hear the other side of the story, as to why we should support this or not support it. That's unfortunate. That's all I'm trying to say.
Let me only counter in a sense that we, this letter does not involve the two different national plans. It only involves who gets to control, you know, have the say into it. So I'm not sure where we're going with that. But Peter?
I view this as big brother control versus local control, and Chatham, our neighbor, is asking for a sense of local control. We'd be doing the same thing if it was in our territory, I think, you know, trying to have our own impact on it. So I hope we support the request of this letter.
So any other discussion?
I just concur with Peter's comment. And I just have just a question. With all we keep on hearing about the seals and their impact, did they cover that in their study at all, or just forgot about it?
Well, they've acknowledged, obviously seals are a big deal out this way, and that this plan would, well, it doesn't really do much different than current management. They are under a protection of, you know, the Mammal Act, and they wouldn't be managing them differently. They may provide some level of onshore kind of harassment protection, but they already have that. So there really isn't much change relative to that.
Okay.
They're not going to have open season for harvesting.
That's what I was, that was my question.
No.
Okay. Peter?
Mr. Chair, and I would move that we send a letter of support regarding the Monomoy refugee draft CCP slash EIS.
My second.
Is it a second? Is there more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Epstein.
Epstein, okay. So, and I'm in favor of it as well. So it's four to one, four and one abstention. And I know your concern, Linda, that we didn't get those here.
Well, I also, you know, I am not going to ask for a show of hands of any of the board who has actually read the Monomoy Wildlife Report, because I'm not, I'm a little afraid of the answer to that. I have read it twice, trying to figure it out. But, so it just seems that it would be good to make decisions based on knowledge as opposed to emotional content, whatever. It's done.
Okay. Peter?
I'm just disappointed, having read it. I didn't vote in the motion. I voted on what I read.
Thank you, Ted.
If I can, just make one more, you know, if anyone in the public, because this is also an opportunity for other citizens to hear about this. I do have, you know, the information where other comments could come from, and if anyone has any questions on specific details, please contact me in Chatham at my office, and I'd be very happy to walk them through and, you know, answer any questions.
What's your email address, Ted?
It's my first initial T, last name Keon, K-E-O-N, so tkeon@chatham-ma.gov.
Okay. Thank you. So maybe I'll give an opportunity for other questions. Thanks again.
Sure.
Moving then to item B on the public hearings and presentations, we have a couple or several of our annual meeting reports. The first one is a report from the Community Center Facilities Committee. And we're going to force Lee to stand up.
Good evening. Yes. You have our report. The only two significant things that I'd like to point out is the fact that the construction bond for the building was paid off last September, and the building will be 15 years old in February. Doesn't seem that long.
Time flies.
Sure does. Other than that, things are going along great. I don't know if you guys have any questions about-
It was a detailed report, so I'm not sure. Hold, does anyone have questions? If not, Peter, go ahead.
I would just, I would just say, Lee, from the report, just to share with people that the census, if you will, on the number of visits, if you will, to the community center, you know, looks like it's averaging about 9,000 a month throughout the year. It's pretty darn good, I think.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's-
The building is used.
Continues to grow.
And it is used.
We've put in a system in the weight room which will give us a much better idea of the people that are using that on a daily basis, because on a daily basis, we get requests from Chatham, Brewster, and Dennis, people who would like the- to use our weight room, and the facilities committee's quandary is, if we say yes to one, and we displace one Howard's person, then, then, in my eyes, we have, we have an issue. So, we're not allowing anybody but Howard's residents to, to use that weight room, uh, but now with the, this new software that we have, we can tell, one of the busiest times and, and things like that, and we may revisit that over the year, depending upon what type of figures we see.
I actually did raise a question, when you have those numbers, is that number of rooms, rooms used, number of people?
Those people.
Is that what?
People coming into the building.
I was a little confused on what that, what the numbers were. Okay, thank you. Angela?
Uh, just a curiosity, do you have a lot of detail on those people? I mean, do you have repeats? Do you have who are residents and who aren't residents, and all of that kind of information also?
I'll defer to Carolyn, if that's okay.
Well, it's, uh, I, I don't expect you to go through them now, I was just wondering if the data existed.
Can I ask how many times Angelo's been in the weight room, is that what you're trying to find out?
We can document that.
They can do that without, no, I'm, you know, I'm only talking to the weight room.
Okay, if you take it out.
The coffee area.
In January, person number one was, I'm kidding. Um, actually, this is not as detailed as the new software that we have, that new software, which we have started in the weight room, which we will put throughout the building, which we're excited about, and, um, the new software will tell us who are, how many repeat visitors that we have, how many are first-time users, so we'll have some great data for you in our report that will be coming up, um, but the one, the information that you have in this report is taken from the facilities report form, that someone comes in when they're using a room, and they fill out how many people are coming, that's the number that they have given us, which is a low estimate of how many people use the room. These numbers do not include Eric's numbers of how many people are using the gym, um, so there, it's, this is just the amount of people who are utilizing the rooms inside the community center. We also take in other numbers, walk-in people, we don't count those in these numbers either, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, Lee, thanks for your many years of service, fifteen years, and I note, uh, and appreciate that on your, uh, on your committee, you've added Sean Libby, for the, we have Facilities Manager.
Yes, Sean's become part of our committee, and we also have Ralph Smith.
Ralph Smith as Council on Aging, so you've covered two important groups, as well as your normal staff.
We are, we're now a full committee.
Yeah. So, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Will? Thank you again, Lee, and Carolyn, for your input. We'll move on to, uh, Council on Aging. This is a husband and wife team, so who, who, how do you decide who gets to talk?
I always do the talking. Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm Adrian Johnson, and I chair the Board of the COA. Um, I know you like to know about our committee's attendance, it's really very good, we have lost two members, and, um, we do have one potential that is interested in, uh, joining the board, so hopefully you'll, he'll go through the process and you'll appoint him. In your packets are the highlights from last year, which I'll briefly review. Um, the New Balance Class for Seniors was added and recognized as an evidence-based due to our community partnership work with Broadreach Rehab in Chatham. It was a six-week course, which was specifically designed to increase balance and strength, and out of seventeen students, fifteen improved from day one to the last day. Hoarding in Harwich and across the Cape continues to get worse, as more awareness is brought to the issue, including DSM five, recognizing it as a mental illness. The COA have met, been members of the Cape Cod Hoarding Task Force, and because of it becoming a significant problem in Harwich, we have put together our own team, consisting of many town departments, which are utilized on a case-to-case basis, some of those including the Building Inspector, Board of Health, Police, Fire, Conservation, the COA Director, Town Nurse, and Social Services Coordinator. The Community Center Birthday Party and Catering Program is a one-stop shopping of services, which has potential for small revenue resource. This formally invites the general public to get a cost savings to them. The Planning Your Future Seminar was held at the community center, which provided information of end-of-life planning. All in attendance agreed a second follow-up would be helpful to actually make the book of documents and discuss where to store them safely in their homes. The men's-only program is a hit, um, thanks to Kevin Grunwald, um, the Social Services Coordinator. He's, um, some of the programs include men's only, excuse me, breakfast, a walking group, and most recently, our, our COA has coordinated with the library staff to select books for our newest men's-only book club at the COA. Some upcoming goals in fiscal year sixteen will be advocating to increase the town nurse position by ten hours to become forty. The nurses' caseload breakdown is in your packets, the town nurse is often the last link to keeping seniors in their homes and facilitating a better quality of, quality of life for those in need. The senior population is the fastest-growing population, the number of persons sixty and older is five thousand three hundred and eighty-five, that's forty-three percent of the total population, which is an increase of three percent from last year. We want to work faster and smarter with our senior center software, SerbTractor, to add the additional capability of a swipe card for activity program attendance and volunteer tracking with a touchscreen monitor and the senior using a key fob. This will allow the COA staff to work more efficiently and not have to manually enter the data of each activity and each volunteer's information. This is extremely important for our Executive Office of Elders Affairs' annual report, in which this information is required. We'd like to increase the usage of the Mature Worker Program for elder services, utilizing the free help to assist the COA staff and enhance programs and services. Increase the usage of the Senior Tax Work, Work Off Program by marketing it more with outreach to the community and increasing the awareness. Work with Channel eighteen in developing new innovative volunteer orientation DVDs, small DVDs which can be used for orientation as well as retraining purposes. And as always, the goal of the board is to assist and help facilitate the COA in providing programs and services which will improve the quality of life of our seniors. On behalf of the board and the COA, many thanks to the friends for their continued support, and many thanks to the hundred and thirty-nine volunteers, whose nine thousand-plus volunteer hours have resulted in a hundred and ninety-four thousand-plus savings to the town of Harwich. Any questions?
Uh, thank you, Adrian. I have a, uh, just a couple. The Senior Tax Work Off Program, how many people are taking advantage of that?
I'll defer to Barbara.
Right now, we have, uh, eight people in the program, there's always been slots for thirty, and that's one of the reasons that we want to do some more marketing about it, uh, simultaneously with the Mature Worker Program, because they both provide, one is town and one is county, um, they both provide help to the town, uh, departments that could use it, so obviously, we'd like to have all thirty slots filled.
Yeah, okay. In terms of the DVDs, that's a great idea, but what kind of, uh, what do you have in mind, this is a, uh, examples of what you try to do with that?
So, in one of our staff meetings, we came up with, we were talking about our volunteer orientation program, which has always been somewhat, in my book, informal, because we don't have twenty people at a time that we're orienting, if you can follow, it's, you know, maybe one or two, sometimes only one at a time, and so they go through the building, we go through emergency checklist and all of those kinds of things, and I thought, well, on an annual basis, I'd also like to have our current volunteers kind of be reminded of the things that are the perfect desk receptionist, the perfect person on travel, perfect person in the kitchen, et cetera, so why not show them what that looks like? So, we would take one of the people that's on and have them going through the motions of what that job is, and, and the kitchen is a perfect example, using, making sure gloves are always on when they're supposed to be, and changing them out, and when that's supposed to be, and why it's supposed to be. So, we would use it on orientation, but then on an annual basis, we would use it as kind of a check-in again, to make sure everyone's doing what they're supposed to. Um, and we have a fabulous channel, so why not use it for educational purposes as well?
Uh, my last question, I know Ed wants to ask one, uh, I think a couple of years, you, you've had some success in combining programs between the Council on Aging and the, and the other side of the building, the rec building, I think, one was on computers, for instance, you have other programs, or is, is that continuing? What ideas to bring the groups together?
We just actually had a, um, the District Attorney and Sheriff's Department came on Friday, and we had a fabulous program at over fifty people, and one of the ideas that came up from that program was, we've already partnered with the library to have, um, Emily Milan comes over, excuse me, and does like a, a techie day, for lack of a better word, on Tuesdays. So, one of the ideas was to have some of the high school kids, as well as Emily, and someone perhaps from the Police Department, or, or Education from the Police Department with us, to discuss the idea of potentially being able to talk each week about what are the latest scams that are going on, because they're so awful and so prevalent, why not have the kids be a part of that, which they have never been a part of with us before? So, we will be, this was just Friday, so we will be reaching out to the high school to see if indeed that would be possible to work with both high school and our, our local police. So, every time we get an innovative idea, we try to run with it to have, um, kids involved, and now that we have this beautiful high school, I think it will be even more than it already has been.
Okay. Thank you. I, uh, read a statement today that, from the Boston Globe, that, uh, there's a fake ad of telling people they can charge their new iPhone sixes by putting them in the microwave.
Oh, gosh.
And, and it says, "Don't do that." Uh, Ed?
Yeah. On the Tax Work, Work Off Program, what's, what sort of activities do the folks do?
Well, basically, we have them in a couple of different places, they've been, um, we have a newer person, younger-ish person, um, who is working with, um, our facilities maintenance person, um, who has lots of skills in doing painting and carpentry and, um, sheet rock work and that kind of background, all the way through to, um, uh, an older female senior who is doing work in, um, Building Department. They have been in everywhere, that, right now, they're in the library and in, um, the Harbor Master, in a couple of different departments here in Town Hall, and with that, um, new position as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any, any other questions? No, thank you. Uh, very detailed report as well, appreciate it.
I'm just going to give you our newsletter, because we are required at the annual meeting to hand it out to you, so I'll give them to Julie to pass on.
Well, if it's required, then we, we definitely need it. Thank you, Jen. Next on our agenda is an annual report from the Recreation and Youth Commission. Uh, John, Mr. Mahan?
John's fine. Good evening, John Mahan, Chairman of the Howard Youth and Rec. Uh, joining us this evening, two long-term members of the Rec and Youth Commission, Frank Crowley to my left and Lee Culver behind me, and also joining us is Eric Beebe, the Director. You have a copy of the report that we sent over, a couple of things I wanted to touch on. We're very fortunate, attendance is right up there, we have no issues with that whatsoever. Couple of other things, uh, Cape Cod Senior Softball Classic was held right after Labor Day, that's an ongoing event, brings in people from the east coast, and I don't know if many of you saw it, but they had a team this year in from Cuba, they played in the, the senior classic, which I thought was, was, was pretty good. And then, on the other end of the spectrum, we had the first annual pickleball tournament over at Brooks Park on Saturday, and that was organized by the pickleball king, who is, which is Frank Crowley. From Florida to Harwich, he has pickleball.
It's good to have a title.
And, um, the last thing, um, we had a trial, a very successful trial, with a food vendor at Red River Beach, and I have heard of no negative impact, and we will be moving forward after, uh, in the future to get the RFP prepared for two thousand and fifteen. And in closing, and I can't go a year without saying this, um, people in Harwich are very fortunate, they support the Rec and Youth, but we would not be able to have the fields, the parks, the beaches that we have, without the ongoing help of the Howard Highway Department, um, without a doubt, from top to bottom, they do a fantastic job, and I'd like to thank them.
Thank you, John. Uh, any questions for John? Ed?
Do you have any, any guesstimate on, uh, how, how many people utilize the Peton Courts in, in Brooks Park?
I don't have a number, and if Eric does, I'd offer him to stand up, but I know it's full every afternoon, at two o'clock, there's a group that plays.
Yeah. It, you know, given, I know how much we, it costs us to build those two courts, and given their usage, they've got to be probably one of the cost-most, cost-effective.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Activities.
Yeah.
Good.
If not, John?
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is a show cause, uh, hearing, Cape Cod Clodde Inn, an Irish pub, we actually have two, one is for the liquor license, discussion and possible vote, and the other one is for the entertainment license, discussion and possible vote. Before we start this, I just want to read through the procedure. We're fortunate to not have that many show cause hearings, so I want to be sure that, um, we follow proper procedure and it's, and it's treated fairly, so, just as a reminder, uh, to what's happening tonight, uh, after, our first step will be to read the, uh, read the notice, and then, uh, I'll ask who, who's present, and anyone who wants to, uh, testify, either for or against, uh, should stand up and be sworn in, and, and we have a, a need to hear a town clerk to, uh, do that procedure. We then ask for testimony from the witnesses, and the first will be a, uh, testimony from, in terms of legal term, is a prosecution, which will be, uh, Police Chief I imagine will start that, but be the, uh, the group that, uh, is bringing the show cause to us, and, and, uh, they'll have a chance to make an opening statement. This will be followed by an opening statement from the licensee, and so it'll be the prosecution first for an opening statement, the licensee for the show, opening statement, and then, uh, the, we'll go back to the prosecution, again, this is a legal term in the procedure, who can call additional witnesses, who's, uh, raised, uh, concerns with the Clodde Inn. So, follow that order, then we'll have a, give the opportunity for the licensee to bring their witnesses forward. After everyone's, uh, presented their, uh, information, uh, I'll ask the board members to ask their questions. And in terms of, uh, time, I'd ask the board members, uh, to, uh, hold off on their questions till we've gone through all the testimony, and then we'll ask those questions, uh, we'll then give each party a chance to make a closing argument, we'll close the hearing, and then we'll decide, uh, two items, one is basically, uh, guilt or innocence in a broad sense, and then the second point will be, what do we, feels the board should be the repercussions of that, if they're guilty or if they're innocent, of course, it goes away. But again, those are the procedures I'd like to follow, I'd like not to go out of order of that, so we can do this in a fair way, and, uh, move it through the schedule. So, with that, uh, I'd ask, Ed, do, uh, you have a copy of, on your, uh? If, you have it, Ed, you can read the, uh, open hearing?
Yep. Um, the Notice of Disciplinary Hearing on September twenty-second, twenty-fourteen, at their seven PM meeting in the Don B. Giffen Room, Harwich Town Hall, Main Street, uh, Harwich, Massachusetts, the Harwich Board of Selectmen, acting as the Town Licensing Board, voted to hold a show cause hearing to hear the following charges regarding the alcoholic license issued to you to the Clodde, Cape Cod Clodde for the premises located at seventy-seven Route twenty-eight in West Harwich. One, the service of intoxicated persons in violation of general law, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section sixty-nine. Two, improper management of the license premises in violation of general law, Chapter one thirty-eight, uh, Section twenty-three. And three, permitting a disorder, disturbance, or illegality on the license premise, in violation of two oh four CMR Code of Massachusetts Regulations, two point zero five two, including the service of intoxicated persons, excessive noise, and vehicular traffic, and physical and/or other altercations at the premise, as well as violation of the Code of the Town of Harwich, Chapter one eighty-nine dash one, noise, on the dates outlined in the attached correspondence from the Harwich Police, uh, Police Department. You are hereby informed, in the event that the allegations are proven, the board may take disciplinary action against the license, which may include, for the purpose of modification, suspension, revocation, or cancellation, uh, I'll vote it. suspension, revocation, or cancellation, voted by the Harwich Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Ed, and then we should read the entertainment as well, so I think we'll deal with it at the same time.
Again, on September twenty-second, 2014, at their seven PM meeting in the Don B. Griffin Room, Harwich Town Hall, seven thirty-two Main Street, Harwich, Massachusetts, the Harwich Board of Selectmen, acting as the Town's Licensing Board, voted to hold a show cause hearing to hear the following charges regarding the weekday and Sunday entertainment licenses issued to you for the premises located at seventy-seven Route one twenty-eight, West Harwich, violation of the Cape Cod Clatta Sunday and weekday indoor entertainment license conditions, including but not limited to numbers one, two, three, and eight, on the dates outlined in the attached correspondence from the Harwich Police Department, as well as violation of the Code of Town of Harwich, Chapter one eighty-nine dash one, noise. You are hereby informed that in the event that the allegations are proven, the board may take disciplinary action against licenses, which may include modification, suspension, revocation, or cancellation, voted by the Harwich Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Ed. As I stated before, anyone who wishes to provide testimony, either for or against the show cause, I need you to stand and be sworn in. I would imagine if you change your mind, you don't have to test, provide testimony, but I can't let you do it if you aren't sworn in. Anita, do you want to follow this?
I was just gonna say, it was kinda hard to, you know, stand up here, maybe go up here?
Yeah.
It's a broad group.
Back towards you.
Uh, no.
Don't worry about it.
Put her back towards us, stand up here.
Put your back towards us, that's fine.
All right, raise your right hand, please. You swear that the testimony in this matter before the Town's Board of Selectmen, acting as the Town's Licensing Board, will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. We've covered that, and now, as I said, we'll allow the prosecution, and Chris, how do you want to, you want, or you want Chief Mason to do the opening?
The police chief, the police chief will act as the prosecution, and then he'll coordinate the prosecution's opening statement and such.
So, Chief, if you can provide us your opening statement, then we can follow through with this.
Thank you. I'm sorry that I had to bring this before the attention of the board, but because of some of the circumstances that have occurred over the last several months, I felt it was important that the licensing authority knew what was going on and what the police department has experienced at the Clatta Inn. Since March of two thousand fourteen, the police department has responded to the Clatta Inn, seventy-seven Route twenty-eight, West Harwich, on twenty-two occasions regarding excessive noise disturbance, alcohol consumption, in the parking lot, fireworks, over-service complaints from, and other complaints from neighboring residents, and the police, and police observations. During the investigation, officers confirmed that music could be heard off-premise in violation of the licensing restrictions approved by the Board of Selectmen and the town noise by law, alcohol consumption outside the licensing area, discharge of fireworks, and assaults. Attached, I have provided the information to the Board of Selectmen in reference to the case reports that have occurred. One of the more outrageous or egregious disturbances and fights that took place at this location involved the use of a machete that was allegedly used to damage private property and chase a patron from the, the property, that after a disturbance had occurred within the property involving the bringing in of illegal alcohol or inappropriate alcohol into a licensed liquor establishment. To put this in perspective, the Harwich Police Department has responded under, on twenty-two occasions over that period of time. All other like licensed establishments in the, in the Town of Harwich has amounted to five. So, basically, the Clatta Inn has occurred four times, over four times, the calls for service as all of the other like licensed establishments in the Town of Harwich combined. I have brought with me tonight officers that have been directly involved with the situations at the Clatta Inn, including Sergeant Kevin Concedine, Officer Keith Lincoln, Officer Brendan Brinkley, Brickley, and Officer Pete Patel, and they will be here and providing information directly on their observations and what has occurred in their presence while they have responded to the Clatta Inn as officers of the Harwich Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. As I mentioned before, we'll, I'd like for the Clatta Inn to give an opening statement, and then we'll come back and, and provide testimonies. So, anyone from Jack Eileen or?
An opening statement.
An opening statement, and then you can call on individuals afterwards. You have to use the microphone, I'm afraid.
Hello, my name is Eileen Cornell, and we've owned the Clatta for forty-five, well, posting fifty years, with third generation in charge of it. My granddaughter is now the manager, as well as her fiance, who happen to both to be present. My granddaughter has a degree in business administration from Bay Path College in Massachusetts. She has been, been working very hard to satisfy everybody that's involved in this situation. There are very number of times that we have called the police, and have been very thankful that they have been coming to our, to our help. The other times that we've initiated, nobody seems to wanna say how often that we have initiated it, and that we're happy to have them arrive and, and quell anything that could have gotten out of hand, whether it was, well, anything that the, the police have, have mentioned. I also know that the Selectmen are involved with the Chief of Police, and they're the ones that really have to tell the police what, what to do, and the Chief of Police especially is answerable to you folks, as, as well as us and everybody else in this room. You are the licensing authority, and anybody that has to say that there are rules and regulations that we have followed, we have spent over fifteen thousand dollars in the last three years in order to satisfy anything that, that you brought, brought it up with their attorney and, and the neighboring, our neighbors that have found, found fault. I noticed that some of the phone calls to the police department have been anonymous, and if people won't give their names, I don't know how they can have our first responders respond to someone that won't even give their name. And everything that we have received in, from the police department has been redacted. So, so, and I, I have a very good idea after twenty years of knowing that this is happening because of the, the neighbors and the, and the, and I also wanna say that that neigh, the neighbors, the residential area does not stop from our residence, our lot line, and a good three hundred feet up the road. So, if you count what's, our building to our lot line, from our lot line across twenty-eight, up another two hundred feet up until where the residential area begins, I don't understand it. If you live near, if you live in a residential neighborhood and you are near an airline, are you going to ask them to please stop fly, flying their airplanes? I know that sounds like a crazy request, but I have to let you know that we have started out with Irish music, and we've had it since nineteen ninety, and it went hand in hand with our in holder's license and our alcohol license. We started getting phone calls from the neighbors at that time. It continued on and on and on with a great deal of loss of business and loss of intellectual character, a loss of self-esteem, and a loss of three generations of Cornell people that have given their heart and soul out to making a going business that the town should be very proud of. We've had, brought up three generations of, of our family here, and we all should be proud of what we've done, and have kept that building, a beautiful antique building, and it still is that way. Nobody seems to give that any matter or any occasion. We have been harassed, and they're using you folks, as the police department is being used, to get even with us, that I really believe now that this has even increased since we've had Jamaican clientele, and we have reggae music, which happens to be now in several places on the, in, in the Town of Harwich, and we were the first to have reggae music. We, we are, they only received a total of five calls, but they don't have fifty neighbors that wrote a petition up against us about ten years ago, do they? So, I don't know how many calls those fifty neighbors had put through to the police department, but I would like to know that number, and also coincide it with the numbers that we have given to the police department. And the nights I've looked from my house down at the, down at the Clatta, I wanna say, when I saw the headlights and the taillights of the police department being there, I was so happy. And if, if it would quell anybody, when the place breaks out, I would, I would like to, if we can afford it, have a police officer there, that we would pay to have him there, so that it would be, it would, because the, the times that the police were there, there was no disturbance. How many times, on that information that you had, that I was able to go over and say to, to all of the things that were finding faulted, it was okay, it was a good night, it was a night the police were there. If somebody has, comes out happy from a place where there's music and dancing and singing, isn't it okay for somebody to have a little bit of pleasure showing as they walk to their car? And if somebody happens to hear that individual over and above the five hundred feet that we have from the property line until the neighbors on their residential line, can't they just forget about picking up the phone and calling the police department, who should be our first responders? They should be there and not be there when somebody makes a harassing phone call. And I don't know what else I can say, and it's not a very good opening statement, but it came from my heart.
Yeah, well, thank you, and you have another chance to call witnesses as we go forward, but.
I'm sorry.
You have another chance to call some other people to testify and move forward. There's opening statements, so. Following procedure that we talked about, Chief, do you want to fill in some details in on the, from your side?
What I'm planning on doing is calling the officers that have been involved in the situation and letting them explain to the Board of Selectmen the calls and the responses that they've had there. Many of these calls were because the Clatta Inn called, and the results and what we observed when we got there. Many of the other calls were called in by private citizens, some of them were based upon the observations of police officers. I must admit to the Board of Selectmen, and obviously, in my position, I am not the one that actually responded to the calls for service. I have based my information on the official records of the Harwich Police Department and have brought them to the attention to, of the Board of Selectmen. As a first witness, I'd like to call Sergeant Kevin Concedine, who has responded and also compilated the list of reports that took place, the twenty-two reports that I've been referring to.
Okay.
Sergeant Concedine.
Thank you. Good evening. I was asked by, asked by the chief to put a list together when all these incidents came to light over the last few months, which I'm gonna go over. The three offices we have here are the ones that really pertain to your license issues from a couple of years ago. In response to the owner's remarks, I just need to say, a lot of times, the Clatta did call the police, a lot of times, the police were there as a, just a normal course at one AM for closing time, just like we are at the Irish Pub and other establishments. We have tried to work with them, to have officers advise them of complaints, that's documented. However, some troubling information came to light to me from Officer Patel, who will, who can get into it, but on September tenth, two thousand four, Officer Patel was at the Clatta at closing time. This was after the Board of Selectmen.
Was that two thousand four, two thousand?
Two thousand fourteen. Yep. I'm sorry. This was after the board gave the Clatta the information for the hearing tonight. Officer Patel drove through the parking lot and made contact with a bouncer, who he has a good relationship with. The bouncer came over to talk to Officer Patel, and the, one of the owners, or the managers, Del Mar, to my right here, yelled at the bouncer not to speak to the police. So, that's great that we have the owner saying we have a good relationship, which we do, but that was a little troubling to me to hear that come from management. A lot of what you have in your packet that I put together for the chief are more complaints from documentation from the police officers, rather than neighbors, that the owner might think are calling us anonymously or, or have a feeling about the business. Officer Patel, Lincoln, and Brickley are here, they can go over what you have in your packet, but what I did was highlighted, starting in July, I highlighted many of the calls that were documented that are in violation of your license. July second, observed, Officer Patel and Lincoln can speak about observing patrons on the front porch with beers at one oh six AM, the bouncer told them to go back and settle at the bar. July eleventh, prior to one AM, DJ and music, DJ and music clearly heard from the parking lot, that is well after the twelve o'clock license cease time. Valid noise on July fourteenth of a DJ and band, again, this did not stop until one oh five AM, and again, past the twelve o'clock cease and desist time on your license. July twenty-sixth, a noise complaint from neighbors, music was heard when patrons opened the door, the side door, the bar manager was notified by us. Again, that side door has, has been in your discussions over the last couple of years and is specifically noted in your comments as far as what to do with that side door. July twenty-eighth, approximately one hundred patrons in the parking lot at closing time, patrons drinking alcohol in the parking lot after closing, and noise heard. And then, going on to June, June third, noise complaint, music and yelling, again, we advised the management of this, and the music was shut off. June third, assault in the parking lot, injured people, officers described injured people that could not leave due to a large amount of intoxicated people and vehicles in the lot. Management was unaware of the fight that occurred in the parking lot. June thirteenth, disturbance call, fight in progress. June twenty-eighth, noise complaint from fifty-four Smith Street, management was advised by us then, again, to please turn the music down. And then, just a few more, May thirteenth, officers were monitoring traffic, two males were seen by officers outside the bar entrance with beer bottles in hand at one fifteen AM, and after the one o'clock closing time. Upon seeing the police, they went back into the bar, well past that closing time. And on May thirty-first, officers pulled into the lot to find a dozen people in the lot with beer bottles and glass beverages in hand. Bouncers cleared the lot and sent all the people back into the bar, and this was at one oh seven AM, documented by Officer Lincoln. Finally, in March two thousand fourteen, a large amount of cars in the parking lot at one twenty AM, and it appeared to the officer that the majority of the people from the bar area moved to one of the small cottages on the property. And if you're familiar with those cottages, he estimated forty-plus people, they're very small cottages, so that was the concern there. And with any specifics, Officer Patel, Lincoln, and Brickley are here to discuss the specifics.
Thank you, Sergeant.
As I referred to in my opening statement on June thirteenth, there was a disturbance at the Clatta Inn.
You'll get, you'll get a chance after he's done.
But it's, that's a case that's in court right now, and we would rather not discuss it, couldn't it stay in court at the moment?
On June thirteenth, and they are correct, there is a pending court action on this particular case, however, the basic allocations involve the use of a machete after a disturbance had taken place inside the bar. The police had been called to the scene to address that particular situation where a patron attempted to bring in, allegedly attempted to bring in unauthorized alcohol. As you well know, on an alcohol licensed establishment, you're not allowed to bring in outside alcohol, it all has to be served and distributed by the licensed establishment. In this particular case, somebody came in there, a disturbance took place, and allocations were made. were made after that, that there was an attempt to, to run an individual over in the parking lot. And then there was also a counter complaint that a machete was used to damage the property of the alleged perpetrator. And I would like to bring up Officer Brinkley, Brickley, to discuss that particular matter and also any other matters that may be, that he has knowledge of, that he can inform the Board of Selectmen from his personal knowledge.
And Chief, your assertion then is, is that these, to get to this point, these comments have no, have no influence on what's going on in court?
No, they do not. They do not. I am not, and nor is the police department, saying that one person was right or one person was wrong, or both were right or both were wrong. We are in the process of saying, this is a fairly substantial disturbance and fight that took place at that location that causes this much concern.
Okay, thank you.
Officer Brinkley.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Officer Brendan Brickley of the Harwich Police Department. Just to make it clear, the charges that we're discussing right now that are open are not brought upon by us of the Harwich Police Department, they were, these were brought upon by the individual citizens involved. So what I can speak about is the formal report that I did on behalf of the disturbance. Okay? So I did, I responded, I believe it was 12:45 at, in the, in the a.m., I responded to what was called a fight in progress. It was a 911 call by the individual who ended up bringing the charges against one of the men present here. And he reported that the individual that was present here had a weapon and was attacking him. Officers got to the Clatta Inn and separated all the parties involved, and we were able to discern that the individual that called 911 brought his own alcohol into the establishment, as the chief has already discussed, is, is also illegal. There was an argument about him bringing the alcohol into the establishment, and a physical altercation ensued while inside of the bar. And there was allegations that tables were thrown, flower pots were thrown, one individual chased the other individual outside of the bar, got in his car, the other individual went back inside of the bar, retrieved a weapon, and went back to chase after the other individual that was in the car, striking the car several times with the said weapon. That individual also stated that the gentleman in the car attempted to run him over while in the car. Just to, to speak to some of Ms. Connell's statements, again, we all understand where you're coming from, this, this is your business that you've owned for several years. Just to allude to the comment that you made of the anonymous phone calls, our police department, as well as our fire department, receives several anonymous phone calls daily, and these people are in fear of any retribution or retaliation that may ensue after people know who's called, okay? The public needs to know that when calling our police departments, our fire departments, Ms. Barbara Ann Foley can also attest that she gets several anonymous phone calls for council of aging issues as well. Citizens need to know that they can call our fire departments, our police departments, our council of aging, and not, not have to give their identities.
The police have to respond.
Just, yes ma'am, yes ma'am. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Officer, are there other cases that you've been down there in addition to this one that involve the alleged assault?
Yes, sir.
Would you please describe to the board other cases that you've been, other situations that you've been involved in at the Clatta Inn, and what your personal observations were when you arrived and actions taken?
I can't. There are two other specific dates where I did respond to the clatter inn. Chronologically, the first of which would be July 14th, I responded there at 1:05 a.m. as we know, and as we already have alluded to, the entertainment license that the clatter has is supposed to cease at 12 a.m., so this is now an hour, approximately an hour and five minutes after the music is supposed to stop. We worked with the management staff, we were able to get the music shut off, we were able to clear out the lot. At that time, there was no one drinking outside of the lot, there was however loud voices, there was a large group, and this band was still playing at 1:05 in the morning. Second of which would be July 8th, July 28th. This was somewhat of a bigger issue, I was actually alone at the time. I entered the lot and I observed approximately 100 people in the lot, drinking alcohol, open containers in the lot, people getting into the cars with open containers of alcohol. I stopped three different people and did what I would normally do in situations like that. I also observed at least two vehicles doing what I would describe as donuts in the lot, driving at a high rate of speed, kicking up the dirt, also excessive noise, making a scene. Those would be the two specific incidents that I, that I would bring to the board's attention.
Thank you, Officer.
Thank you all.
Officer, have you ever made any statements to the owners or managers in reference to your concern about the number of calls that we've received down there?
I have, sir, and that also goes back to the, the incident where the alleged weapon was involved. At that time, I explained to Mr. Amisto, who's here, what the repercussions would be with the calls for service. Just by sheer volume, the amount of times that we had to respond to the clatter. As Ms. Connell has stated, they've called us several times to answer to their bar, which is fine. However, the anonymous calls, the calls for the, the people in the neighborhood, that is going to bring this to the board's attention. We discussed that with Mr. Bliss, we discussed, discussed that with Mr. Amisto.
Okay.
I'd like to call Officer Pete Patel. Officer Patel was another officer that has responded on several occasions to the Clatta Inn for various types of calls, and I'd like him to describe his personal observations and knowledge of situations that have occurred in his presence.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Good evening. As the chief said, my name is Officer Pete Patel, with the Harwich Police Department. Throughout the, the summer months, especially when there's, you know, large volume of people going to the, the bars, you know, in our town, we, we generally do around closing time, go there just to make a presence. So when people come out, they'll say, okay, there's a police officer, maybe I won't get into a fight tonight, I'll just go home. It works, okay? It's a great strategy. And my calls that I have here are self-initiated police officer calls, where around closing time, I will go sit in the parking lot and just, just be there. You know, talk to Del Mar and Sarah, the bouncer, who generally speaking, have a great rapport with throughout the summer months. So I'll go chronologically here, I have a total of four incidents that stand out. The first one, July 2nd, 2014, at approximately 1:06 a.m., Officer Keith Lincoln and I pulled in to the lot, and we observed several patrons on the side patio with beers in their hands. And the bouncer yelled at them, told them to get back inside, they went back inside. On July 4th, 2014, at approximately 5 past 1:00 a.m., I pulled into the lot, there were a few people in the parking lot, one of which I recognized as Del Mar, they were setting up, setting off fireworks. Del Mar looked up, saw me, and ran back behind the establishment towards the tiki bar. And I then, pretty much I got on my microphone and said, all right, guys, that's enough, cut it out. You know, no more fireworks. September 10th, 2014, again, self-initiated, let's see, this is at about 5 past 1:00 a.m. I drove in, observed a group at the side door, the bouncer there usually works, forgive me, I forget his name, but we have a great rapport, talked to him every time, he came out to me to talk, and I saw Del Mar telling him to get away from me, and he turned and walked away. And he did say something along the lines of, what, you know, he just came by to talk to say hi as he was walking away. So I did make that note. Then on September 14th, 2014, self-initiated, and this was about, I pulled in about 6 past 1:00 a.m. I, I stood by for closing, and I observed about five, maybe, maybe five to six people exit the bar from the basement and go up into the main house. And then, then I cleared. Several times, you know, I've spoken with all you guys, you guys know me, I know you. You know, I've given them advice many times on how to run a professional establishment, you know, to keep things going, and, you know, we're not out after you, you know, we're here to help you, like I've told you many times, you know, and we have to keep that rapport, you know what I mean? So, do you guys have any questions?
We'll hold the questions right now, Officer, but-
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, very good.
But stick around.
And lastly, I'd like to call Officer Keith Lincoln. Officer Keith Lincoln is another one that has frequently responded to the Clatta Inn, and I'd like him to present to the Board of Selectmen the information that he has in regards to the calls that he's handled there. Officer Lincoln.
Keith Lincoln, Patrolman, Harwich Police Department. As Officer Patel stated, a lot of our things are in self-initiated. To explain what that is, we have our own computers and our cruisers, so we don't have to call into dispatch to put some of our calls, and we can do that right there in the car. Officer Patel and I work midnights together quite a bit, we have a habit, or, you know, our job is to watch our establishments, we have a habit of going and sitting across from all the establishments in town. One of the statements earlier was that, you know, we kind of singled this one out, I know myself, Officer Patel, Harwich Port, multiple establishments, they can't sit in front of one, so we do foot patrols. I'll actually park our cruisers and get out and walk around and hit those multiple establishments and make contact with people in the parking lots there also. Kind of a preemptive to make sure that the right person is making the choice to drive home, and also to make sure that any situations that are escalating get quelled before they turn into a problem. Both the assaults that happened at, at this establishment, I responded to, one was just as backup, the one with the machete. Numerous witnesses in the parking lot pointed out the same person that was carrying that machete, but a lot of people didn't want to give a name due to retribution. The one I'm going to speak directly to was the one that I responded to was a responding officer, was a fight in progress on May 6th, and this was a gentleman who was injured in the face due to a punch in the face that resulted in him getting spun around and hitting an inside wall and having a large laceration to his forehead and his nose. But the important part of my report that, that I want to bring to attention is that I did interview Ms. Amisto outside about what had happened, and her statement to me was that she and Mr. O'Reilly had, she had noted that Mr. O'Reilly had become intoxicated and began to irritate other patrons in the bar area. She stated he was argumentative and confrontational with a number of patrons around the bar. At one point, Mr. O'Reilly picked up a bar stool and threw it across the room. At that point, Ms. Amisto asked Mr. O'Reilly to go outside so she could talk to him about his behavior. After the two spoke, they went back into the bar area. Shortly thereafter, Mr. O'Reilly entered the bar area, he was struck in the face, causing him to hit the wall, causing the damage or injury to his face. My concern with that is, if he was that kind of a behavioral issue to bring him outside and talk to him, why would he be allowed back in the bar? If he was that intoxicated and that disruptive? Okay? Other calls I was involved in, on the 31st of May, pulled into the parking lot shortly after 1:00 o'clock, and there were about a half dozen to 10 people in the parking lot with beer bottles in hand and glassware, okay, walking around the parking lot. I made contact with a black male in the parking lot who announced himself as a bouncer, so I had told him that everybody needed to be off the property, no one should be outside with drinks in hand, but at this point, after 1:00 o'clock, the parking lot should be clear, the building should be clear. Those same people, shortly thereafter, I cleared there, within 25, 30 minutes later, there's another call on the log that would bring us to a house on Gray Neck Road, those same people, we, the party continued on at that residence, same people that I had spoken to or seen in the parking lot had moved to that residence. The young black male who announced himself as a bouncer was there, I made contact with him, he now admits that he does not work for the clatter, that he was also a patron, but he did not want his friends to get in, get in trouble. Again, most of my self-initiated ones were noise complaints from sitting across the street with a cruiser running, windows down, you could hear the music across the street. Other times, it was to just pull in the parking lot due to the large volume of people trying to leave, and just sit in the parking lot with a cruiser running, and again, just our presence there can usually make people expedite their exit from the property.
Thank you, Officer. Chief, is there any others, or are you, wrap it up? You have, you have a chance to give a closing discussion later.
Yes, I'll, I'll reserve anything else I have to say in a closing statement. Thank you very much.
Let me, are you speaking for the clatter or for a-
I'm speaking because I, on the, I was recognized by 4 Smith Street, was one of the calls. Sebastian Mudry, 54 Smith Street, West Harwich. It's not anonymous, I made one call at the request of my wife because she couldn't sleep because of the noise at the clatter. One call this summer, one complaint to the business number of the Harwich Police Department, not a 911 call. Spoke to the dispatcher, dispatcher said she would get somebody out there. They followed through, and my wife couldn't sleep. But the times that she had complained to me over the summer was several. I did not document them, I didn't write down the dates, I didn't call the Harwich Police Department, but she was disturbed several nights from the music, loud music at the clatter, and also by fireworks, and she complains to me because our dog Charlie complains to her about the fireworks. This is not funny, but there's a comparison I'm going to make, UMass Amherst has something called the Barney Fest, they're ending it now because of alcohol and violence, apparently it's going to be over. We have the equivalent in season on a regular basis in our neighborhood across the street. We have the Clatta Barney Fest. It's not funny. And it should end.
Yep, thank you for that. That gives the testimony for the prosecution, so-called prosecution. I'd like to call on any, anyone from the Clatta Inn who would like to provide information on this issue.
Okay, um, my name's Sarah Namisto. Sorry, this is very emotional for me. My family's owned this business for 50 years. I was given the business about three years ago, when my mom could no longer take, take control. Um, I'm sorry. There's just a, a couple of dates that I wanted to touch on tonight. The incident on May 6th, I had two disorderly customers come into my bar, I served them one beer piece, it was an open mic night, where we have a host that usually plays guitar, and people come up and sing with him. These customers came into the bar, both ordered a beer, one of them actually sang at open mic night while his friend began to intimidate some of our customers. We have an elderly customer, she's about 80 years old, she lives across the street, and that customer grabbed her at the top of her head and was shaking her. At this point, I went around to the other side of the bar and asked the gentleman if we could go outside and talk, just to try to keep the thing, I didn't want to just initially kick him out, I didn't want anything to escalate, so I asked him to come outside and talk, where he picked up a bar stool and threw it at me at that point. Our, we are, we're a very small establishment, so a lot of our customers, we're very close, we all know each other. A lot of my customers got very irate at the situation where a customer threw a bar stool at me. I asked everybody- I asked everybody just to relax, to calm down, things got a little out of hand. I never got that customer outside in order to bring, for him to come back in. He never made it outside the bar. After he threw the bar stool at me, I turned around and called nine-one-one for police help because a lot of my customers were upset at things going on and I just didn't want things to escalate from there. The other incident on June thirteenth, where our manager, also my fiancee, Delmar is being accused of having a machete that evening, we were also the ones, Delmar was the one to call the police, not the party who said was being chased. We were the ones to call the police that evening because the customer who brought the alcohol inside the bar refused to leave the property, so that we did. A few more things that I wanted to touch on. We have had an issue with customers bringing their drinks outside. We had, we have a ramp and stairs right outside the bar where we did allow our customers to smoke cigarettes there and bring their drinks outside. That's just been a rule that I grew up at the bar, so a lot of my lessons, I've just, you know, a lot of our rules, I've just followed what I've watched that my past few generations do. So that would never have been a problem. We now allow no alcohol, any beverages at all, whether it be alcohol, water, anything. We don't allow our customers to bring anything outside, outside the door. I just thought, another thing that I wanted to mention was, Pete had mentioned that Delmar asked one of our bouncers not to talk to him just a couple days ago, which the reason for that is that we no longer have that, he's no longer an employee at our business, so we just don't want, if there's an instance where the police were coming up, we didn't want him to get involved in that situation because he no longer, he's still a friend and a patron of ours, but we, he doesn't work for us anymore. So we didn't want anything to get misconstrued that way. Now that the summer's over, we have, we're only having entertainment four days a week now. We have Entertainment Tuesday and Friday where we have karaoke night. It's a mixed crowd. We have people who are eighty years old and people who are twenty-five years old on that night. And then on Saturdays and Sundays, we still have a DJ.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Sure, you can.
It's Eileen Cornell again. I just have, people, people don't have a clue on what an inholder's license curtails. We even go back to colonial days where we have to bed, hay, provide hay for your horses and we have to feed your horses and we have not been able, we have to accept the fact that everybody has the right to ask for food, so therefore we have a cook on the premises at all times, not so much at night when they go to bed, but still, if anybody demanded food, they'd have to get it under the auspices of our license. We do have the exception. We do not have to provide anybody with alcohol. If we don't want them, we can just refuse to serve them under any, any conditions, never mind if they've had too much or if they're demanding or they throw things at our people. And the last thing I'd like to say, in an inholder's license, you have a license to serve alcohol anywhere within the confines of your property, not just the building. We exercise that right. We have a tiki bar outside by the pool. We have lived up to every rule and regulation regarding the pool and with the Health Department and we got triple-A findings for the year two thousand and fourteen. Everybody has to have CPR, everybody has to have drowning. So we've done that. We've sent people off to school. We've educated all our staff with regard to anything like that. But the simple fact is, when somebody's having a cocktail outside on the porch, that happens to be our house guest in our inn. And if somebody's walking around the parking lot at five minutes past one and my kitchen and my bouncer, Delmar, have to, tells them to get inside, he knows that those people are house guests, would presume that they are, that they're talking to people, that are house guests. So there's a lot of the rationale that people don't quite understand about inholders. And I respect the fact that we are inholders. I respect what I have to do to maintain our integrity. And I also agree with the fact that we have the right, our freedom of speech to have our entertainment license kept and contacted. It's not, it's not abused. The fact is that we were told we couldn't have drums. How can you have Irish music and reggae music without drums? How can you have any music without drums? So some of the stuff that has come, there's rules and regulations, we found that it's impossible to have to curtail to them. So I guess I'll, I don't know if my husband would like to add it. We are the owners, by the way. Anybody else happens to be a manager, assistant manager, a manager of the kitchen, manager of the bar. I have a lady that does our rooms and takes care of our rooms so that they're immaculate for people. And you might not find that on the internet because we had a disgruntled customer, purchaser about ten years ago that bought the place and wrecked it for us. Well, anyway, just to let you know, that's, some information so that when the police find somebody outside the door at five past one, it very well could be a house guest. And I just want to make that clear.
That'll be a discussion that we'll, we'll have to speak to as we, as we get back to the board discussion, Eileen, but thanks.
Hi, Jordan Mitchell, I'm a bartender at the Clata. I just want to talk on one date, July fourth, actually, due to the firework police report that we have here, I do just want to note that there was a tropical storm that day. It was raining very hard. I was outside working at the tiki bar and we actually had to close to go inside because of the rain. It was, there was a lot of rain. So I just want to note the fact that fireworks, I personally have called the police on two occasions due to fireworks on neighboring streets, just to like say the fact that we actually have not been the ones setting off fireworks. There are actually neighbors across the street that lit off gigantic fireworks, like ones that you would see in like professional shows. I just want to note that we actually did not light those fireworks on July fourth. Just wanted to note that there was a tropical storm, there was rain and a bunch of stuff, so thank you.
Thank you. Let's have, Chief, you have any closing and we'll, we'll wrap this up. We'll turn it back to the board then.
The Police Department is well aware that the service of alcohol can cause problems. I know, everybody knows that people will have a tendency or some people will have the tendency to over and buy. There are some issues that the Police Department has to respond to help, help out businesses that are trying to conduct, you know, and make a, make a good business and a good, good partner for our town. However, again, I have to go back to, there's twenty-two calls for service at one location over a very small period of time. Now, taking consideration, and I know I don't have them all listed, I'm just doing these off the top of my head, but similarly licensed people or businesses in our community include Hot Stove, Land Ho, Four Hundred East, Ember's Pizza, The Port, Four Hundred, oh, excuse me, Four Hundred East I already said, O'Neil's and Brax Landing. All of those businesses run similar types of operations in that same period of time. All of those businesses together amounted to five calls for service. I can't explain it, I don't understand why. However, there is a huge concern here as to why that, that occurs. This is far beyond the norm that the Harwich Police Department has experienced. In one particular case, they were talking about the fireworks. The one, one case that we were referring to, the officer actually observed an employee of, of the Clata Inn discharging fireworks. This isn't a mistake, this isn't something that was happening at another location, this wasn't fireworks that people think that might have been discharged at the, at the Clata Inn. This is a police officer that actually observed it occur. I, as I said, I realize that it can cause a problem, but it seems like other businesses in town have a better capability of keeping this under control and not necessitating the types of calls for service or the severity of the types of calls for service that, that we've experienced at the Clata Inn. This is not something new. I have been fortunate to be the chief of police here for over fourteen years and this is, I have personally been down to the Clata Inn with members of the Board of Selectmen, with police officers, with others to try to work with them. One of the things I tried to bring out in testimony is that the officers that respond there have tried to work with them. We have tried not to use the court system on every case because virtually every case that we go down there on could result in a court action and we tried to avoid that. However, this has just gotten to the point where we believe that something should be done. It is our recommendation or my recommendation that some action being, be taken against both the alcohol license and the entertainment license. However, this should be progressive in nature. In the past, there have been other hearings held before the Board of Selectmen. I'm not saying that there should be a suspension or denial, however, I do feel that some type of action appropriate, as the Board of Selectmen deem fit, should occur. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. And we'll end with the Clata. Do you have any other statement, a closing statement you wish to make or have you said enough?
I'm Jack Cornell, you know that.
I know that, yes.
The Clata is up for sale now. If anybody wants to buy it, it's five hundred, five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And if the police came at quarter of one instead of five after one, there might be not so many violations.
Okay, thank you, Jack. But I think we've, we've heard the statements, the testimony. I turn it over to the board for any additional questions or comments and then Chris, at the end of that, I'll ask you for your recommendations and then we'll, Chris will go from there. Pete?
Thank you, Larry. Just making an observation and notes in our package, identify the last violation before all this summer stuff happened is May of two thousand and eleven. I think we went through this three years ago. I think this gentleman was just coming on as the manager or something and I guess I would just ask, what's changed this summer? I mean, it was pretty calm for three years, maybe the police probably have some instances and whatnot, but it wasn't this collection of twenty-some odd to report. It didn't come to us until this summer. What's changed? Are you running the place differently or the patrons different or something's going on there? There's got to be a reason for this.
You have to use the mic, I'm afraid, for each, for each answer. I'll remind you that since we're on TV and we're being recorded, you have to stand up and use the mic so we're efficient.
The difference in our business, I think, in the past three years, this is the busiest summer that we've had in the past three years. This is the first summer that we've used security at any of our doors. In my lifetime being there, we've never had anybody to check IDs at the door, anybody to make sure that things weren't coming and going from the parking lot. I can remember when I first started drinking, I was out at different bars and people were saying things about the Clata that I never knew. And being there my whole life and not being in the business, being in school, coming, working another job and then actually taking the business from my mom, I knew that there is things that we were going to have to improve on and things we were going to work on. We are still trying. I know that we're a very young staff, very young managers of a business. I think that we definitely are trying to move into the right direction. We're, you know, doing the best we, best thing, best we can and just, we, we have somebody now that's at the door, we only use one door for entrance and exits unless we have a handicap person that needs to come in, then we use the front entrance that we're supposed to keep closed at all times when we do have entertainment. We keep that door closed unless somebody comes to us that needs to come in through the handicap entrance and that way then we'll open it for them. We have a couple people on our karaoke nights that can't come on in through the stairs on our regular entrance, so they come in on the handicap ramp. Other than that, we have somebody now that checks IDs at the door every night. If we're not sure, you know, as bartenders, we make sure we double check. We're not allowing alcoholic beverages outside the bar at all anymore. So if you want to smoke a cigarette, you have to leave your drink in the bar. I think that we're only moving in a positive direction. I know that there are things that we still need to work on, things that have happened in the past that we're not too proud of, but we're, we're, we're moving in the right direction.
Up here.
Guys, keep going with a little line of thought here. Do you know the occupancy limit on the bar area inside?
Our inside occupancy is forty-seven.
Forty-seven? And yet in the police report, I see a hundred people in a parking lot or something.
Yeah, we're allowed to have additional customers at our tiki bar, but I've never seen a hundred people inside of our bar on one night. Even with fifty people in there, you can barely move.
Guys, ask the police if they ever noticed that there were more patrons inside than this forty-seven number or fifty number just around it.
Just to clarify, I never observed a hundred people or upwards of forty-seven, whatever the occupancy is, inside of the building. By statements that night, I'd have to look on the date, are, were outside and that had to do with people drinking in the parking lot, spinning the tires and the three people that I had to deal with for essentially being drunk and disorderly.
I guess I'm assuming if you have a hundred people in the parking lot, just question if you inside, they came from inside, let's put it that way. Somewhere, yeah, yeah. If I could also just ask, has the Police Department ever observed or been there to, the entertainment license says everything has to stop at midnight as far as entertainment goes? Have you ever witnessed the fact that it does stop at midnight or is it typically when you're there, twelve-thirty, one o'clock, the entertainment's still going on?
I had a couple of dates that were noted that I could still hear music across the street at past one o'clock in the morning. July eleventh, just prior to one AM, DJ music clearly heard in the parking lot area. There's one other one. May thirteenth was another one with the outside drinking.
Okay, I'd just like to ask management then if they could respond to that, what the, what the practice is on shutting the, I'll call it the band down at midnight as required by the entertainment license? Nobody has a watch?
Don't want to respond to that, I assume.
It's a requirement of license, you shut down, not serving alcohol, but the entertainment stops at midnight. It's clearly stated in the license.
We actually do have a house stereo system that does go a little bit louder than we would like sometimes. Me, myself as a bartender and my security guard, we do our best to try. He checks every twenty minutes, he does go across the street and checks to see whether the base level can be heard from neighboring streets across there from the five-hundred feet level. If he can hear it across the street, he comes to me and asks me to turn it down. Regardless, sometimes like if you open the door, you open the side door for the handicap spot, like if you, obviously if you open doors, like the noise level outside the building can be louder than it is heard inside and we do do our best to try and keep it relatively low, but to where you can still have like a good time inside, we do try to keep our level of noise down as best we can, however, though.
So if I, not putting words in your mouth, but if I understand what you said, I think what I heard you say was if you had a band there, they stop at midnight, but you play your own internal entertainment system after midnight, is that correct?
Yes, I have, I, I brought my own inside, trying to, to work both sides of the level there.
So I guess I'll just ask this board what their, what their interpretation of what that means the entertainment license, quite frankly. In my interpretation of it means at midnight, the entertainment stops, which is music.
The, I would agree because our concern was the, the town bylaw for noise and, and was on our, on your license, actually, that the noise can't be heard outside, so.
Actually, it's, it's not supposed to be heard outside, but does clearly say entertainment inside the building will cease at twelve AM. That's pretty clear. Entertainment is very clear.
Entertainment and radio.
It says entertainment.
Right, but is our radio considered entertainment?
Yes.
Our radio is considered entertainment? Okay. All right.
Peter?
And one more question for me. And one more question for me. Chief, could you fill us in on, at that time of night, it may vary based on summer, winter, or whatever, but in day of the week, how many officers are on patrol at one o'clock in the morning in the town of Harwich typically?
Typically, four will be on duty. During the summer months, we add one additional. Our normal minimum is three, but then during the summer months, we put on four. It'll be a sergeant and three officers.
Yeah, someone has to respond. For instance, I didn't hear the details. When I respond to somebody with a report of a machete in a parking lot, what do you do? What's the response?
All four people respond and handle the situation.
So when you get in a situation like that, the town of Harwich has all of its police resources at that point in time at one location because of that one instance. And I understand the reason for it. I'm just saying you're tying up your entire police force. You know this better than I do because of an incident at this facility.
That is correct. As a matter of fact, what we've had to do on other occasions is call for assistance from outside agencies to cover other calls for service.
That's why this is, I mean, one of the reasons this is serious. I mean, you know.
I guess what concerns me a bit is, is the bouncer that you've added doesn't seem to be very effective. Is that a true statement? If there's beer in the parking lot and trouble inside the bar, is that, is that a true statement?
When we have patrons come into our parking lot, if they have alcohol in their cars, we don't know that regardless. We don't have the authority to go to their cars, ask to search them, be like, can you have, do you have alcohol in your car? When they come into the bar and they order drinks from us, that's our responsibility. If we see them in the parking lot and they have alcohol in their possession, that's up to us, that we're liable for that. But if we don't see it, and if the police see it and by chance we're not outside.
And so you're saying that the bouncer doesn't allow anyone else to carry bottles into the parking lot?
Now that we have had security, we do not let anybody outside with alcohol in their hands. We do not. We have a sign on our door that says, "No alcohol outside." We only literally let people outside to smoke cigarettes. And that is all that you can do. If you leave your drink in the bar, that's all that we allow. Can I just ask you one question, though?
Sure.
Can, where, what is, I just want to know what the town's perspective, like, what their written consent is on entertainment and where I can find that?
Your license.
Your license indicates.
Our license has it written on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
What classifies entertainment, what the town classifies as entertainment is stated on the license?
Well, let me, you know, we've had this discussion numerous times in the last several years, and the discussion actually was, to the extent of the noise, you could hear what you're doing off the premises. And in our minds, that defined entertainment. Any entertainment or noise level that was outside the premises was always our discussion. I think you recall these discussions, why you had meters to measure noise levels that you put at the edge of your property. And so that, I think, defines entertainment in a broad sense. Ed?
On their license, on their license, it, description of amusements to be conducted, live or recorded music. Well, you can't tell me, you know, what you're broadcasting or playing over the radio is recorded music also. And that's clearly stated on your license.
Is that the same as television? A lot of bars have TVs going out there.
How are you? Andrew Pignan, resident, West Harwich. I guess my question is, where is the definition? And this just maybe is me, as a resident, asking, what is the exact definition? If I go to another establishment and they have the radio playing after their band stop? I mean, are you telling me that the radio and television can't be on after midnight in any establishment in Harwich? Is that, is that?
What I'm saying is, is that we have, excuse me, go ahead then.
It's defined as live or recorded music.
Live or recorded music?
If somebody's playing the news show, that's not live or recorded music. That's news.
Okay.
If they're, you know.
So just to be clear for the television audience in the audience here, is that if the TV is running through the same PA at that same decibel, then in that case, that's okay, but not the radio?
No, that's not what we said. There's also a noise bylaw, and Chief can address the noise bylaw if you wish. That's a Chief response.
I was just going to also say that each establishment has its own entertainment license, so that some other establishment could have a one AM, entertainment has to cease. So you, this one is, yeah, so I just want to clarify that, that it all depends on what the individual license says.
Chief, you just want to clarify the noise bylaw?
Yes. To clarify, between ten PM and seven o'clock AM, if there is any type of sound that exceeds one hundred and fifty feet from its origin, it doesn't make any difference if it is a television being played loud, a canasta game getting out of hand. It really doesn't make any difference what it is. If it could be heard a hundred and fifty feet.
You're showing your age, Chief, but go ahead.
Hundred and fifty feet from its point of origin, it's a violation of the bylaw, the noise bylaw, ten PM to seven AM.
Okay. Does that answer your question, then? Because you have, we have your entertainment license, but we also have a town bylaw.
Yes, sir, I was just asking for clarification.
Any other questions or comments? Linda?
In following through with some of Peter's comments, these incidents go from May, April, May, June, July. I find it, what is it that you were doing to try to pull these incidents back? I mean, there's twenty-two incidents just through July. We heard of more and continuing on through the summer. What was your plan to try to address this so that we would not end up in this hearing? Whomever'd like to.
Diane Cornell, owner. I think the explanation for incident needs to be explored a little bit more. An incident is when the police, on their own accord, decide to come into the property, observe something that they find to be at fault. Is that an incident?
Yes, ma'am.
That would be an incident?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, the situation was that the lady that does work for me, cleans the rooms and does a lot of work for me, was outside speaking to her friend, and she happens to be Jamaican. And the Jamaican lady was also Jamaican, her friend. And they were followed by three police, three police cars were across the street in the parking lot with their lights out. They didn't realize that the police were there. These two women don't drink at all. They left, the police cars followed them to the first lady's place of residence. They looked out the window. They waited for the police cars to disperse before the lady that works for me was, felt comfortable enough to go home, which is up in Dennisport, up off the Lower County Road. And she was very afraid that they were still going to follow her all the way. Now, that could very well be a cultural situation, that she's afraid of the police. But why are they, why are Jamaican people afraid of the police? Why do things escalate when the police come because they're fearful? And I know in Jamaica, everybody happens to know how violent the crime is. Well, we don't want that to happen on Cape Cod and in Dennisport, but we have to take a good look at our cultural mix now. It's a lot different than it was ten, twenty years ago. And we have to accept the fact that there are differences with the understanding of cultural, whether it be being loving dance, loving music, loving dancing, loving to talk loud, loving to laugh loud. Why is that so, such a reason for a police call? For the first, most responders to get out there and answer? I don't get it. I just don't get it.
Thank you, Irene.
It doesn't make sense to me.
Okay. Hi, do you want me to answer?
You may.
Okay. To answer your question, I think I might have answered it a little bit before, that we've let go some of our old bouncer. We've hired a new bouncer who's been working for us for about two months now. We feel like we've, you know, moved in the positive direction, not allowing alcohol outside. We are making sure to try to keep the noise level down. I don't think, I think the DJ, I think, is the problem that we're having. We've let go one group of our DJs and have another one who cooperates better with us. I've had instances where I've asked the DJ to turn it down, and they've just kind of brushed me off, and I've literally unplugged them because I just can't take it. I'm like, I will literally go pull the fuse box on you because they won't listen to me. And I've had to just unplug them and say, you know, you're too loud, and we're not going to work with you anymore because this is important to me. I think that we've had a good track record. I think that we, even with the lawyer that we've been in these meetings with before, the opposing neighbor's attorney has come into our bar on nights where we've had a DJ and has thanked me for our positive improvement and said that we are moving in the right direction. I think that was a year ago. But we just continue, you know, we're willing to work with the police. We're willing to work with the board of selectmen. We're willing to work with anyone. Just, we're still learning, and we want to keep moving in the positive direction.
I appreciate your statement. My concern is, is that there doesn't seem to be the sense of control or the control needed to follow the rules that we've established for the licenses, the noise bylaw, and concern. At some point, you have to, not continually work toward it, we have to, you know, have control.
I don't think we're ever going to get over this noise problem. It's been going on for over ten years before I was even part of this business. But when I had no idea what was going on, we've been fighting off noise complaints since then. And when I was a little kid at the clatta, you know, I'd be swimming in the pool. We had a whole huge live band with guitars and bass and drums and everything. And that was outside at the end of our pool, closest to the road. We had live bands playing out there. We used to have kids karaoke during the daytime outside. Parents, families would bring their kids to the pool, and they would have an opportunity to sing karaoke during the daytime. We'd have, you know, acoustic shows, Irish music, different kinds of music. And that was what happened. That was all there when I was little. And for years and years and years and years, there was no problem. And now that, whether they're new neighbors or old neighbors or whatever, now that there's a problem, I don't think that we're ever going to get over the problem.
Okay.
You know, and if we don't have entertainment at the clatta, we might as well not be open. You know, those karaoke nights, those reggae nights, those are what are keeping us in business. Those are our best nights. Those are, you know, and I don't think that that noise problem will ever, ever, ever get solved because we keep coming back here, year after year after year after year after year, whether it's our fault they're complaining, whatever. I don't think it's ever going to get solved.
Now, Pete?
Well, I think one way you start to solve it is to understand what the license says.
I fully understand what the license says.
You do? So contrary to what the other young lady said, you understand come midnight that the noise stops.
I understand that, and I also feel like we're being personally attacked for some of the things that we're doing.
There's a reason for putting that in the license, and that is because, I think, with this board anyhow, my recollection is, you stop the music at midnight, by one o'clock, a lot of your patrons have left, I hope. Right? They wind down. They don't hear the music anymore. Some go wandering out. Instead of you stop the alcohol at one and you stop the music at one, everybody's staying exactly till one, then they exit, and there's a giant crowd in the parking lot, which seems to be a problem, or can be a problem. So the whole idea of stopping the noise at midnight, the music at midnight, is to allow that one hour transition, if you will, where you're still able, you know, to sell and distribute alcohol. But you will have a more, in my opinion, a more orderly exit of your patrons during that period of time. That's the whole idea, and apparently, that doesn't ring with you folks.
If there's no more discussion or questions, I'll, Ed, and then we'll.
You know, this unfortunately has been a topic that I've sat here dealing with for now. I think the eleven years I've been on this board. And I thought we had gotten around the noise issues. And if I look through the police reports and the complaints, it all has to do, the noise issues all has to do with noise at one o'clock in the morning. Well, one o'clock in the morning, there wasn't supposed to be any music. There wasn't supposed to be any music after twelve. But, you know, that's the entirety of the noise issues that the police have brought up in their report. I think, though, for me, in looking at the list of incidents that are listed in the police reports, that's most disturbing is, five years ago, when we were going, having our back enforced over, trying to come up with a solution to the news, noise issue, never involved in any of it was the level of fights and physical violence that you see listed in the reports from this summer. And that's disappointing.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Ed. If there's no more discussion, the entertaining motion to close the hearing?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We now, I suggest we deal with the liquor license part of the hearing first. And a reminder that, well, our job now is to discuss guilt or innocence, and then what the penalty should be if it's guilt, and then we'll move on to the entertainment license. So concerning the liquor license, Chris, do you have a recommendation?
Based upon some of my discussions with the chief and certainly listening, you know, I'm always concerned as the town administrator that we do have very limited resources, and we're trying to assist twelve thousand people that live in this community and not just one establishment. So I do think that we need to keep that in mind, and certainly, that's always been in my mind and past experience. I think also we have folks that are trying to do a better job, and also folks that are trying to sell the business. And we certainly want to at least keep that in mind. Going through the disciplinary guidelines, it says that only offenses which have occurred within the last two years are really supposed to be taken into account. With that being said, I think that the first offense is where it would be appropriate, and it goes from a warning to a seven-day suspension. And, you know, I would recommend that the suspension be conceivably either five days and do the whole week, or do three days, but make it Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. I think a stern message needs to be sent to the owners that the actions as they have taken have not been sufficient. I am compelled by the chief that the chief has gone out of his way, and his officers have gone out of their way to give fair warning and to try to have the folks know. But I think that at least the recommendation I would make would be three to five days, and make sure you do it on a weekend to make sure the message is loud and clear that something needs to change.
Linda?
Knowing that you probably have entertainment scheduled, I guess, going on the town administrators' conversation, I would move that we suspend their liquor license from October tenth to October thirteenth. It's a weekend.
Through the thirteenth?
Mm-hmm.
So it's four days?
Four days.
Four days.
Four-day suspension.
Sure. Second.
The only add-on is, just to prevent any confusion, I think that the entertainment license should be linked to the liquor license, so basically that none of those activities occur, so that way there's no.
I think we're dealing with the liquor license first. I think we'll have a second motion after that.
And so the motion is to revoke, suspend the liquor license from October tenth through the thirteenth?
Mm-hmm. It's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
And there's a second? Is there any more discussion? If not?
Could, just a question. This, the question is this. We spent, a couple of years ago, we went through this same kind of problem every year for three or four years. I mean, it was, it was not a lot of fun, and not a lot of progress was made. I think that if we do it for the four days, that's fine. But I think we have to ask the chief to pay as much attention as he has been paying. And if there's one more one of these issues, he brings that before us. And if there's another one issue another month from now, he brings that before us. And then, so that everybody understands that there's going to be a building of the issues because the third one can be the end of the license. So. So, maybe we can encourage you to, to deal with this, uh, and without making it difficult right this moment.
Let me just emphasize what Angelo said. I, I'm sure you've gotten the same letter, but, so you know this. The second offense is a warning to thirty day suspension and then the third offense is a warning to, uh, revocation, so we could pull the license. Uh, Peter?
I also note that, um, the current license expires thirty first of December, two thousand fourteen. Assuming there would be an application to renew the license, you know, for next year, I would hope there would be a plan put together that would, based on this suspension, if you will, assuming it goes through, um, how these issues will be addressed in the coming year.
Yeah, okay. No, 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 no. That's a different issue.
Well, it, it would be on file.
It would be on file. They would know about it, but you would, uh, but it would start over. They would have the same, uh, license requirements. Okay. Any more, uh, if not, all in favor?
I just wanted to make sure I got the dates right, cause my recommendation was Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
I, I know, and I made a motion for Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
And Monday.
Tenth through the thirteenth.
Tenth through the thirteenth.
I just thought Thursday night maybe-
Thursday might be better, but you don't like that?
That, that was my, my only thought.
Okay, we'll go with that. Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the entertainment license, uh, Chris, you have a recommendation for us on that?
I think it would be, again, the, the same, that in order to, uh, send a clear message that the ability to do it and those same four dates, uh, also to have a, kind of a cease and desist on the entertainment. I think the message needs to be sent loud and clear. The police, I think, tried to send it in a positive way. It hasn't been responded to and I think you have to do it in a punitive way.
Okay.
All right then, I would make, uh, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that the entertain, indoor entertainment license be suspended for October tenth through October thirteenth for four days.
Sorry.
All entertainment.
Angel?
All entertainment.
My only problem with that is we've just had the manager tell us that she can't control it, that there's no way to control it. And that it's not gonna happen. So, I guess my question is, if in-
Hello?
Right.
Okay, uh, excuse me, you, you have to, uh, use the mic, go ahead.
There is a way to control it. Ultimately, Sarah, my boss, has been working at this establishment for about, what, three years? Yep. So, a lot of these complaints that you guys are talking about from the past years before she owned it, there is an ultimate goal that we are working to get towards. And we, I'm not saying that we shouldn't be there because we should, but alt- a goal is something that you work towards. It's not something that you get to the next day. There is a plan that we need to put in place. We need to have better ways to figure it out. Maybe we need to hire more security. Maybe we need to, we, we definitely need to get more, um, handle on our, on our DJs, our bouncers, everything. And I'm not saying that we're not going to get there because we will. It, it's gonna take a little bit of time and, I mean, you guys are suspending the liquor license and the entertainment license, which is definitely a loud and clear message that we have heard. And we will get to the point where we're not gonna have to come back in front of you again. We will get this under control. And it's just gonna take a little bit of time and a lot of work, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Linda?
But respectfully, since this has been going on since May, I think this board is going to be looking for that very concrete plan before a liquor license is reissued come December thirty first. And I hope you hear that because it's not, we're thinking about it. You should, it, these things should have been put in place by now. Not just now starting to think about it because there's the danger of suspensions and losing a license. You have to be more proactive than that.
Uh, yeah, and I just add that, a plan plus concrete results.
Yes.
You got that right. Okay, so if there's no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and, uh, thank you, uh, everyone for the, uh, testimony, the civil discussion and, uh, hopefully we'll go forward. Next on the agenda is a comment from Cape Light Compact, Barry Worth. And we've, uh, we've lost our audience for- Barry, you've apparently scared everyone away, but, or maybe it was- No.
That's correct.
No.
The license is suspended, those four days.
No alcohol, period.
None.
No.
So, cancel it.
Oh, you're running a room, I guess, yeah, well, yeah, that's how, that's, yeah, yeah, we can't stop that.
Yes, you can. You don't serve, there's no alcohol served, whether they're-
Don't serve, but they have a in too. Make it, if you, if you're in a room, you can bring your own box, you can bring your six pack into your room.
Okay, they can bring a six pack to their room, yes.
Yeah, right.
But they cannot serve, yes, at all.
Right, right, that was her question. I hope.
That's what you-
I'll give you that.
What did you guys do wrong?
Uh, Maggie and Barry, please, uh, introduce yourselves for the audience and, uh, we'll start.
I'm Barry Worth, I'm chair of the Utility and Energy Conservation Commission in Hurwich and it's representative to the Cape Light Compact. With me is Maggie Downey, who's the Compact Administrator. We've pre- we've prepared responses to a number of the questions that Leo Kukounis presented in a letter to you in, in July. Uh, and Maggie will, will go through those, but before, before we do, I'd like to address the one issue that, uh, I have been most concerned about. And this is, and this is nothing new in talking to the board about this. Mr. Kukounis is concerned I had, I took the authority to make a decision as to whether the town would vote for, um, joining the re- the other towns in a, uh, in a decision related to the dispute between the, the Attorney General and the Department of Public Utilities in relation to the aggregation plan that we operate by. The, uh, the, uh, intergovernmental agreement that had been signed by the town a long time ago and we have dealt with, and we have dealt with the question of can the, can the Cape Light Compact representative make a decision without having to get an approval from the, from the Board of Selectmen? The answer to that is, is yes. That has been, uh, even our town attorney has, has backed that up. I, I follow that, but I try to do it with a little bit of common sense. And dealing with issues that are controversial, the ones that I think are, ones that need to have the input from the board and are not just routine things, I go back to the board and ask for, and ask for response. This particular issue i- is one in relation to the aggregation plan where the Attorney General has taken upon herself to try to extend the reach of the, of the aggregation plan well beyond the areas that the, that the plan, uh, it is meant, is meant to cover. The DPU has not been, uh, satisfied that that's something that, that should happen. And, uh, the attorneys for the Cape Light Compact, uh, recommended to the board, to the board of the Compact, that we reject the requests from the Attorney General in response to, I think it's some twenty out of twenty-four questions that, uh, not just questions, but demands that the Attorney General made. I agreed with that decision and I vote, and I voted, uh, positively to, to do that. At this point, you can tell me I made a mistake, you can agree with me, or you can fire me. But, uh, really, the, the position is that I feel like that was a, uh, a just decision to make and we're willing to go through, uh, the, uh, the, the other questions that, that were brought up and, uh, and some res- and response to them.
Barry, can I ask you, uh, just, uh, on that issue, is there, is rejection based on, uh, uh, reluctance to, uh, set a precedent with the Attorney General or is there some fact that you're, that you don't wanna share with the Attorney General? What, what's, what's the reason that drives that?
I'm gonna get to that in my presentation, but I'll, I'll address it now.
I'll wait.
It was-
I'll, I'll wait.
Okay.
Peter?
If I could, Barry, I'm, I'm just assuming. You tell me if I'm wrong. But when that vote was taken, I'm assuming that legal counsel advised your group, basically.
Advised the board to-
Advised the board, that that was the position they should take.
At a board meeting, yes.
That it wasn't necessarily you thinking this up to say, okay, let's be tough with the Attorney General once we are, or whatever, and let's reject sending something. Legal counsel for the Compact says, my recommendation to you is you vote not to do this or to do this. And that's the direction you follow, is legal advice.
All, all towns did vote positively for it.
And nine times out of ten, I think most groups would follow their legal counsel, assuming legal counsel has expertise in that area and is looking out, hopefully at that point, in your best interest, I'm assuming. All right?
All right, well, good evening. Thank you again for having Barry and I here. So, just a little bit of background. You may recall that in the fall of last year, I came by, I think it was either fall or early spring, and gave an update on the Cape Light Compact. And including in my update, I, we informed Barry and I about the request by the DPU to update our aggregation plan. And for, because it was a document that was over fourteen years, thirteen years old at the time, and they also kept looking to it as they reviewed other aggregators and noticed that it was very static. It was never our intent to have that be a document that would be updated. As Barry referenced, we update our intergovernmental agreement regularly to reflect practices. But we, when they contacted us in August, I put it on the agenda for the following meeting, which was September, and the board wholeheartedly had no problem updating the aggregation plan to reflect current practices. And we began a ser- all fall, a series of discussions. Our staff brought drafts back, the board, um, reviewed the plan at our September, October, November meetings. In December, we, I sent a memo to all of the town managers, asking them to forward a red line version, not only to them, but on to the Boards of Selectmen, showing the changes that the board had reviewed. We subsequently, the board have vote, voted to approve the proposed changes and we opened a seven week public comment period. And we held three public hearings throughout the month of January and into February due to weather. Uh, during, we received overwhelmingly, uh, letters in support of the Cape Light Compact's proposed amendments. Uh, and we then incorporated any of the edits. We had one, uh, one town made a suggestion to, we, so we amended the plan based on any public comments. And then the board voted the, to approve all changes in March and we filed the aggregation plan with the Department of Public Utilities in April. The Department, the DPU, it was docketed, it's called fourteen sixty-nine. The DPU held a hearing in May, again, overwhelming attendance at the meeting, all in support of the Cape Light Compact and the Cape Light Compact's proposed amendments to the aggregation plan. At, after the hearing process, what normally occurs and what did occur is you have what is known as a technical conference that was involved the attorneys of all of the intervening parties. So, that would be the Department of Public Utilities convenes this technical workshop, the Attorney General's office, Cape Light Compact's legal counsel, and we have, uh, Self Reliance, um, which also intervened. So, their counsel participated in this call. During the call, the DPU set what we, the scope of the proceeding, clearly indicated and stated that this was, this is not, we're already an approved municipal aggregator. The focus and the purpose of DPU fourteen sixty-nine was on the proposed amendments to the plan. And immediately there was quite evident that there is a disagreement between the Attorney General's office and the Department of Public Utilities over the scope and the breadth of the DPU fourteen sixty-nine. So, the actions of the board, and I think I've sent a couple of memo, memorandums to the Boards of Selectmen cause I saw the handwriting and the headline coming on this one issue over a disagreement that we were frankly caught in the middle of as to what exactly is the scope and purpose and nature of the, of fourteen sixty-nine. And we, the board determined when we started to see, we, you receive IRs, so all of the parties get to ask you information requests. They are called IRs. You get them from Department of Public Utilities, the Attorney General's office, and, excuse me, the D O E R, Division of Energy Resources was also a party. So, you get questions and you formally a- answer the questions, um, on record. When the, uh, the Attorney General's office sought to ask questions that were well beyond and not pertaining to the amendments and to expand the scope and jurisdiction of this docket, uh, we, we, the board discussed them. We had counsel who, consistent with the technical session, had said that we believe that this is only on the amendments. We also had a decision from Hampshire Council of Government by the DPU that also was very clear that the, uh, on what the proceeding and the direction should be. So, based on previous decisions by the department and our, and our, and what we believe the scope of this proceeding is, we answered only questions that were pertaining to the amendments. We were very clear early on, both in writing and informally, that we have no problem answering any of these questions, providing any of these information. They don't belong inside this docket. So, that's the process. The DPU is, who regulates the Cape Light Compact? That we are a regulated entity, we report to the DPU and they determine what we do and what we don't do. That, those motions are still pending. We will be given an order on those motions. So, there are two motions. The information, and I'm getting a little ahead of myself, we'll come back to that, but we will do whatever the department tells us. If they want those as part of the do- the formal docket, they will, all of the information will be included. If they agree with the Cape Light Compact, then they will not be included in the docket. So, we're waiting. We should have a hopeful decision on that soon. But, so we've prepared our responses. There, all of the questions, uh, have been answered. It's, it consists of five hundred and twenty-six pages of information. And it is, it was provided to the Attorney General's office with a note, a let, a cover letter, clearly stating, um, that it was being provided outside of fourteen sixty-nine. This was after we heard nothing. The board, at I think our July meeting, authorized me to prepare a letter to invite the Attorney General to come down, meet with the board, meet with staff and review anything he, she wants or any member of her staff wants, and it was radio silence. So, as a result of not hearing anything, we, we were pulling together the information, cause our intent was to provide the information. We sent the information to the Attorney General's office with a cover letter and subsequently posted all of the information on our website.
So, just briefly summarize, you're answering all the questions. The only, uh, issue is, is in what form you, you need to send it in?
Correct. The issue is whether or not they are a part of the DPU docket fourteen sixty-nine or not. And that is a decision of the Department of Public Utilities and we are still waiting for the answer. So, as I said, all the, all the information is out there. Um, it's on our website. It's been provided, uh, in hard copy as well as electronic version to the Attorney General's office, um, staff. It's, the Compact takes very, um, seriously. I know Barry does, I do as the administrator on comments of not being transparent. Uh, I think that we are probably one of the most, if not the only, transparent energy, um, entity in the state of Massachusetts. All, there is a lot of information about-
That's a little bar though, probably.
You know, I don't, I could say that there's more information about the Cape Light Compact than any town or city or county in the United States of America on our website. And it goes from our financials, uh, and, and it wasn't always that way. There, rightfully so. And it wasn't because anyone was being hidden, it was just not thought of, uh, to be put up there. I remember Linda and I had a conversation a, a long time ago, a suggestion about how to put our financial documents out there so that it's, they're, they're easily understandable. Um, I met with the Sandwich Board of Selectmen last week and, um, one member of their board suggested, can you please put up there on where the budget is, a pie chart, something explaining the revenues, the expenditures are there? And I said, great idea. So, that's what we're working on, trying to update, um, that. It's all there, but because the information is very complicated, I'll be the first to admit, um, I, I, on my energy efficiency budget, it's a thirty-five million dollar budget. I only have seven cost centers. I could lump everything into seven cost centers, but because that's not how public entities work, we put all, we break them down into things that you would easily recognize. But because all of that information is out there, it's a little over, overwhelming. So, I'm always very interested in hearing from the members of the Cape Light Compact, from Barry, from the appointing authorities on ways to, and suggestions on if there's something that you're looking for, this information that you think hasn't been provided, to let us know so that we can address, address that question. And again, the last that we've been talking about, we just recently posted, um, updated our revenues and expenditures. All of the revenues and expenditures for every single line item from nineteen ninety-seven, so we've got through June thirtieth of two thousand and fourteen are on the website. By category, by fund, so every single fund that the Cape Light Compact, that includes everything from state, federal grants right down to our, you know, annual energy efficiency programs are out there. are out there. The board, I asked for direction on the board, how often should I be doing this? The board said every six months, so it'll be updated when we close the calendar year. We heard concerns that we don't have independently audited financial statements several years ago, and that issue was addressed and corrected. We've always had audits as part of the Barnstable County audit, but we were looked at as agency funds. We now have independently audited financial statements. They're also available on the website. And as Barry wouldn't let me get away if I didn't put in a plug in for making sure we're, we're looking at a winter that's going to see abnormally high electric prices. So we strongly encourage those, the only, the best way to control is to use as little electricity and, or as efficiently as possible. So I encourage everybody to, if they have not had a home energy audit, for your home or business, to give the Cape Light Compact a call. So with that, if I didn't address any of the questions, I'm more than happy to answer some.
Thank you, Maggie. Thank you, Barry. Are there any questions? Peter?
Just to be clear, everything the Attorney General has asked for, you have now provided? Is that right? Everything the Attorney General asked for, you now provided?
Yes.
Okay. And that, all that documentation's public, it's in the record?
It is on the website, and it's been provided. It is not part of the record relative to 1469.
Okay, so everything that needs to be known is known, right, at this point in time? Can you tell us just on the aggregation plan, just because I don't think we all remember any, like, two or three really significant things in the revision to the plan?
I think a great one, again, listening to some of the comments and suggestions, the board developed on its operational ladder, which is known as a mill ladder, policy on spending, how, what the balance should be, so, and put some parameters around collection and funding of that. So I think, and that's, they articulated their policy in the plan, and I think that's a great thing that the board adopted as part of, that came out of one of the management letter, as a recommendation from the auditor.
Okay. And I guess the last thing I just ask, and since Leo raised all this topic with us in his letter and whatnot, I don't see him here, but I still don't quite understand, I think that the Assembly of Delegates, or at least their little subcommittee or whatever, was trying to support what the Attorney General was trying to get from information, if I could just paraphrase it that way. And so I'm assuming that when you satisfied the information for the Attorney General, you satisfied whatever the Assembly of Delegates was asking you to do or looking for?
I wouldn't dare try to speak for the Assembly of Delegates.
Okay.
I believe we've provided them everything that they've asked for. I have not, because we've been on record, if they're missing something, then I would imagine that they would request the document, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Barry, Maggie, thank you again, then.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
Thank you for sticking around.
We're not done yet.
Should I shut this down, or?
And let's move on to old business now, then, which is, they're considering Cape Light Compact and C-VAC discussion, possible vote. Is there any comments on this?
Mr. Chair, it sounds like the issues have been addressed.
I don't, and I don't think we need a vote. The issue was, we were included in a, in a broader letter, which we wanted to be sure that we agreed with, and so, if everyone's comfortable with that, I think we can move on.
I think we can, too.
Okay.
Go.
Go. I thought you said no.
Go.
I would just say that we had a presentation tonight, we read the information-
What is the C-VAC matter that's involved here?
Chris- It was a second component from the last meeting, in which I think Angelo, you had received some correspondence, electronic correspondence, that you forwarded to me after the, the meeting. But that was in regards to something different, whether there was the bankruptcy of the, of the solar company that had installed the solar farm.
Yeah.
So we looked into that, and we forwarded that on to Liz Argo to respond to the accusations that were made about the economic viability of the bonds from the company that installed the solar farm.
ACE.
ACE, correct.
Yeah, okay. I haven't seen anything in, in writing as to what specifically the, the issue is.
Okay, we forwarded to, we forwarded to Liz. I thought Liz was going to have a response.
Okay, all right.
If the board's okay, when she writes a response, we'll get that to you, to the board.
Okay.
But we did follow up on that, Angelo.
And we'll get that to you, Larry, as well. When Liz responds, we'll be sure you're-
Okay, I'll, I'll be in contact with her.
Okay.
I mean, we've, I mean, we've had allegations twice in the past about ACE supposedly being unable to perform, and it was, it was misinformation, if not disinformation.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Terry?
Larry has resigned.
Right.
And he said that he attended his last C-VAC meeting. So we are on the hunt for a new C-VAC representative.
Thank you, Terry.
Just like to get that out there. Peter was at our utility meeting last week, and he asked us to perhaps send a letter.
Okay, good. And we've, as I mentioned, Larry also prompted me to pay attention to his resignation.
So we have an opening on our committee, and we need a C-VAC rep.
We do have someone who might be interested in the Utility and Energy Commission, that we're trying to set up a chat with this individual.
Yep, okay.
Go ahead.
So when I started, just to wrap this up, if there are any other issues or questions out there about Cape Light Compact, C-VAC, that we haven't answered or addressed, get somebody to bring them forward, so we know what it is.
Yeah.
At this point, we think we're done, right?
Right.
I think we're done.
We think we're done, but, good point. Thank you, Terry.
Should we formally respond to Leo's letter? Because he asked us three questions, and should we formally respond to those, so we can-
I think we should. Chris, you and I will work on that, and we'll make a short response.
And I, I provided you, a year and a half ago, we went through some of these same issues, so I'd given you the minutes to that meeting, so I think we have the basis.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, we have that.
So, I think, but just respond.
We'll do that.
Close the loop.
Yep. Okay, moving on then to new business, Howard's Community Center Code of Conduct. Chris, Julie, you're into Carolyn.
End all meetings by nine o'clock.
We may not, we may, we may just stop this. We'll go very quickly, Carolyn.
Let's leave.
Happy to go very quickly. You have it in front of you, the community center opened, it did not have a code of conduct. Met with Barbara Ann, certainly Julie has seen it. Barbara Ann, Eric, went through the boards. It's pretty, we're trying, just trying to put something down on paper. There is a typo in it, certainly will be fixed. It says, under participating, participants and guests, the first one, community center staff or community center volunteers, not of community center volunteers, just-
Well, I, I read it, and basically, you're the ones that have to enforce it, so if you're comfortable with it, I don't have much to add. Linda?
Couple, couple questions, Carolyn. Are you going to, are you going to define things like offensive language? To actually define offensive language, what does that mean? Because it's, it's very open-ended. And as long, and, and also, the maintain personal hygiene, hygiene that is healthy and inoffensive. The healthy part, there may need to be some more words to that, as to a definition, so that you don't get into a interpretation?
Sure.
Or, why are you treating me differently from this person? All of that.
And you can't spit on the floor?
Well, it doesn't say, actually, it does, it doesn't say you can't spit on the floor. You could do that.
That you, that you can do.
Well, no, I mean-
That you can do.
Okay, we'll, we'll modify that, then, we'll move on.
Yeah, well, I guess broadly speaking, and I had the same kind of issues, language that, or behavior that might be offensive or disturb somebody, may be different in your mind than it is in his mind or my mind. So you've got, you've got to define in detail, like, no smoking is very clear. And it's, it's difficult to do, so I understand where out you're going.
It is very difficult to do, it's a very broad range of people that use it, so we were just trying to set up some parameters. And truthfully, we hope we never need to use this, but we wanted to have something in place. But I absolutely hear you, and I'm more than happy to take this back and fine-tune it for you, and I don't want to keep you any later, I know you're working very hard.
And that's a, you know-
Ooh! No, I meant, I meant that sincerely! I meant it sincerely, I-
Did you hear that? That's a minus mark on the review.
It was meant as a positive remark, I truly meant it.
And I take their points, I wonder, though, if defining those issues, maybe like the Supreme Court in defining pornography, he knows it when he sees it, so.
Now I have to define that, wow!
I don't, I'm not, I wish you, I don't know, I wish you luck, but I'm not sure you're going to go much further than you have.
Take a crack at it, because I think that if you said profanity is not permitted, I think that is more easily identifiable or definable and understandable than offensive language.
You always list all the words.
Well, that would really help, Angela.
If someone speaks Russian over there, someone may say that's an offensive language. I don't want to hear that.
Absolutely.
I don't think that's, that's the intent here.
Okay, Carolyn, we're, we're moving on.
Okay.
New business, be it as community center, emergency disaster plan.
Run like hell.
Who's going to comment on that, anyone?
Kind of the same issue, we were just trying to put something in place. Again, we went through all of the different departments within the community center. Certainly, the town administrator's office has seen it. Again, it was an attempt to put something down on paper, so that there would be some structure. We are trying to get some policies and procedures following this board, trying to redeem myself.
Right.
You're setting a fine example, so.
Okay.
I'm trying to redeem myself, and I'm not doing it, it must be late.
Not doing it.
Oh!
But, uh-
I'm going to get you a shovel.
But you've worked with, you know, Emergency Lee and so on, so-
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm not sure we have an action on this, actually.
Yeah, I'm not sure we have to vote on it.
So, so do you give out tickets for these? Because it says written, you have a book of tickets, you give somebody a violation?
I'm sure Lee told us.
It says in there, observe, it says consequences of failing to observe the code of conduct are-
You're going to get an L painted on your forehead.
Yes, I'll have to check and see what his book of tickets looks like, kind of knowing you.
Okay.
I would suggest that you bring it back, fine tune these, because I don't think we have an action on it, but we'd like to be aware of it. And I think it goes in your policy, at least some reference to it in your policy book. Ed, did you have a comment?
Well, are we still on the code of conduct, or are we on the emergency?
I guess we moved on.
We moved on to the emergency plan.
I thought we had. And, you know, the, the emergency disaster plan is in reference to an emergency or disaster happening at the community center.
Correct.
Right.
But there are times when we have an emergency or something happening in the community where we look to the community center to respond, to take care of people. Do we have a plan in place for that?
That becomes a different situation, I think, actually.
We do, under Lee's-
Under Lee's stuff. The formal shelter in the area is actually Cape Tech.
Yep.
So this would be a secondary location, but to your point, I mean, the secondary location could perform some functions. So we can ask Lee to weigh in on, on what those-
Because I know we, we have set up the community center on, on a couple of occasions to respond to residents' need, one in the, in the case of a, of a severe weather emergency that knocked out power and provided a sheltering place. And the other case, the other case is simply act as a cooling center, when we, during the summer, we go through one of those bad heat waves, and it's exceeding the ability of people to stay in their homes without air conditioning.
And Ed, I believe that that's part of Lee's overall emergency plan.
I, I read this as being, something happens in the community center that is an emergency there, as opposed to a town emergency, but it's a building specific, gas leak, whatever.
Okay.
I can see the positive attitude you had, the last word that you've typed in here is the word that it's approved.
Well, usually when, when my policy, or if we do a policy and you approve it, I like to put the date on it, so that we can update it every so often, so when and if we ever approve it, I will add that it was approved, and we'll date it, and, but the, we'll bring it back and make any changes. So if you think of anything and can just let me know, I'm happy to do that.
Do we add in hours, minutes, and seconds?
Okay, we have to move on before this gets carried away. See, our new business is something that I wanted to bring in, in front of you, and that's a possibility of a joint meeting between us and the finance committee, for the department heads to present their information. I think the benefits of this are obvious, it reduces the amount of times you have to present data in half, since you only have to do it once. I think there's also some benefits that we can learn from each other, each other's groups on what questions they ask and responses they get. Of course, we would have to split and have our own discussion and take our own votes, because we're two separate committees, we have to be very careful that we're not influencing each other on, on any discussions of what we go, but information, though. As I recall, and help me out, I believe we tried to do this last year and could not come up with a, we had trouble scheduling it.
Well-
I don't know if it was scheduling, I think it was just reluctance to do it by this board.
Okay, I'm hoping that, that, I'm hoping that goes away, that we see the benefits and we can schedule it.
Well, and, just a question, in the olden days-
Like a year ago?
A year ago.
More than that.
Back in the early 90s.
The two boards used to meet on Saturday mornings.
Yep, all day.
In this room, or whatever, whatever it took. And it wasn't either a selectmen's meeting or a FinCom meeting, it was a joint meeting to answer those questions, because, because the FinCom and we and town administration have different questions, it's a different, different kind of thing.
And that was my question to the FinCom, and their, actually it was email, so I didn't, it wasn't during their meeting, but would they be willing to meet outside their normal schedule? Because that'd be my question to you folks, is that would we be willing to meet outside our normal schedule, at a time that we both agreed to, to do with Angela, you've said. And we might want to do that during, during a workday, so it's easier for the department heads to come in, but, you know.
Well, I'm-
It's okay with me if we do that, but, Chris?
I, I thought one of the things of, you know, when you say ancient history, it's funny that I've been here less than a year, so I almost qualify for some of that, but in the, in last year, I thought when we went through the process, the board had its meetings with the department heads, but then I think almost the majority of the board showed up at FinCom meetings, and I think the thought was, well, I see yes and I see no, but, you know, I think the, at least the idea that if we can look at the schedule that FinCom has, you know, is there an interest? If, if folks are going to be out two nights a week, you know, do you want to be out, you know, three days a week in, in terms of these meetings? And if the FinCom schedule is something that works, and I think Skip sent through the FinCom schedule draft one, the end of last week, if I recall right. That may be something to look at.
Maybe we pick a day and see if that's convenient, we could just all, if not, we could pick another one, but Ed?
Yeah, you know, back in the old days, the first several years I was on the board, it was a presentation that occurred on a Saturday, it started at eight, eight or eight-thirty, and ran to lunch, and we took a break for lunch, and then finished up in the afternoon. And it was, each department head would get, sit down and go through his budget and give an overview. And what I found to be the most important part of it, not really, was, you know, the specific numbers, but the overview of getting a sense of what all that money was actually buying in the types of programs and services that affected the life of folks in this town. And, you know, since then, you know, we, one of, one of the programs that I know that we had problems keeping in effect, but we did, was the shared boat patrol on Long Pond that we shared with, with Brewster, and we had that year of the override, and we eliminated it that year. Brewster funded it fully in that ensuing summer. The following year, we committed to putting the money back in and told Brewster that, only to find out that-
They dropped theirs.
The money never made it over to them, to reimburse them, and so they wound up canceling it, too. And I think, you know, apparently we have brought it back now, but I'm not- And I think, you know, apparently, we have brought it back now, but I'm not, it wasn't by anything that the Selectman really did or were aware of, it was purely out of the-
Harbor master movement.
Harbor master just doing it, and reallocating his own budget. But, you know, it's, it's important that, you know, it's not to micromanage what, what we do, but to have an understanding of what it is collectively we're buying.
I guess in, in terms of just going to the finance committee meetings, that really doesn't give us any real standing to ask questions. So that's a, that's a negative for not just attending the finance committee meetings and sitting and listening. I think we have an interest in asking those questions as well.
I think what Chris was talking about is only the timing of the finance committee. We posted as a joint meeting.
If you're already there, my point is, instead of having it be you're in the audience listening to what finance did-
Oh, you didn't say that, okay, so that would make more sense.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't make that as clear as I should.
Well, the real point is, if you want to get together with clients, create a joint meeting, let's just get to it.
If, if we do that, that Chris and, that, that Chris and I work, come back with some proposed schedules, that we could do that.
Would that also include, it just says budgets here, but it would also include articles, I will assume?
Articles, yeah. Yeah. Right. Okay. If, if there's consent, Lou, quickly.
Very quickly. I was just hoping that if there is a combined meeting or something, that the public is made aware of it. I found those meetings-
You have to post it, and there'll be minutes, agenda and minutes.
Thank you.
By law. See, Bill Galvin's checking me on this one.
Yeah, you may have to, actually, you may have to run two series, because you start the budget one first, and then you do the article one later on, because the articles will exist.
We'll, we'll work out the details on that.
Maybe, maybe not.
Ed?
I guess, you know, the, the thing I was starting to point out, you know, that I've been to the finance committee meetings, and I understand the level of review of going over the dollars and cents, which they're charged with. The, the process in the past, though, wasn't necessarily to concentrate on, on the dollars and cents, but to have an overview of the town's programs and services, and, and understand how each department was paying for those.
Yeah, if I can-
You know, and it's a different, it's a different emphasis than, you know, going, you know, we can join a finance committee meeting and talk about, pick apart the dollars and cents, and maybe suggest that they could use a little bit less in travel and more in postage, and, but that really isn't the sort of more broader scale understanding of how, what they do impacts and provides for the programs and services the town folks need.
Let me, let me bring this, this part to the end and ask that, we send to Chris some of the questions we'd like to be answered at our department head meetings, we've asked some financial questions, and you've had some suggestions. And, so we're sure we can ask the right questions-
The department heads prepared to answer.
Prepared to answer, not only the financial, but the, sort of the implications of some of those.
Defend your budget.
Defend your budget, the implications of the budget, and so we have a broader discussion then.
And considering that, over the past few years, we, and since I've been on the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen, we've asked those questions every year, and some of the departments are doing better than others, in understanding that we will keep asking those questions.
We'll, we'll try again. Let's move to Town Administrator's report, and in terms of time, Chris, I suggest we postpone A and B and move to C.
I, I'll go, I'll keep it on, I'll try to keep it under five minutes. On the Architectural Advisory Committee, I did look up, they are a entity that had a town meeting vote. Plans are, some certain plans are required to go to them. We'll make sure we include them in the process, so that was something that, I'm not exactly sure. I guess it was an effort to try to merge their activities into the planning board, which never came to fruition, in my understanding.
We did receive a grant for $4,400 from the DEP for recycling efforts in the town of Harwich. So we have grant funds that will be coming to us through the Highway Department. Also, on the, we have received a wetlands appeal in regards to the relocation of the Bayview Way of the Water. So I've sent the material over to Mike Ford, and we will coordinate in accordance with our agreement, there's certain criteria that we're gonna follow, but that's not, not great news, but at least it is what it is. Mary McIsaac has informed me that we had a, some special legislation in regards to Skinniget Road that has been passed and was approved, so now we're able to bond that project effectively, Skinniget Road. On the Halloween party at the community center, Friday, October 31st, and it starts at 3:30 PM, trick-or-treat coloring contest, food crafts, games, and prizes. If you want to make sure that the weather is not cooperating, you can come within the building and have the, the safe event for the kids. On the Brooks Street Library, do run several programs, now that school's back in session, so they have early release movie matinees for Wednesdays, when early release occurs, at 2:30 for middle and high school students. And also on Thursday, they have a Harwich Dream Theater Explorer Group that runs introductory classes at Thursdays at 3:30 and runs till, till 4:30. And then we had received a, some correspondence from Habitat for Humanity, that they have our application information meetings. The two meeting dates are Wednesday, September 24th, 6:30 to 8:00, or Saturday, September 27th, 10:30 to noon, both held at Harwich Community Center, 100 Oak Street. So if you think you're maybe interested in trying to qualify, those are the informational meetings to see. Obviously, you can contact the Town Clerk's Office or the library for applications. I think that was less than five minutes.
That was less than five minutes, that's very good. Is there, Ed, Selectmen's, Peter?
There's a meeting in Chad on Wednesday, four to, Tuesday or Wednesday, four to six.
Wednesday.
On a 208.
It's Wednesday.
Is anybody going on that? Somebody going on that? You are?
No.
All right. That's at Chad Community Center?
Yeah, Chad.
Linda?
Yeah, did you?
Angela? So, entertaining motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second?